Do you have anything to show on your computer, Peter?
I do not.
Except Zoom, unless you want Zoom up there.
Yeah, I know, I can put Zoom on.
You want to just test it for me?
Daniel, is that my Ed?
John.
Hey, Ed. How we doing?
I'm here, sorry, the in-person. Probably gonna have a choice here around.
Checking wireless three, check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Testing on wireless three, check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Near the podium, yeah. Check one, two, three. Wireless three. Say again.
No, we're turning these in.
Check one, two, three, four, five, you see it now? Do you have wireless three? Do you have wireless three? Okay, going to four. Podium, check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, how's the podium? Check one, two, three, four. Okay, going to four, wireless four. Five, wireless four, check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Check one, two, three. Okay. Checking a handheld. Handheld, until it's nine or seven. Check one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Test one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Got the handheld? Okay, great, thanks.
All right, let's get going, we're a little late. Call a meeting to order. It is 6:03 on June 21st. We're here in Freeport Town Council Chambers for our town council meeting number 12-22. So, present tonight, we have Council Pillsbury.
Present.
Council Fournier.
Here.
Council Daniele.
Here.
Council Bradley.
Here.
Vice Chair Egan.
Here.
And Chair Dan Pilch is here. Council Lawrence has not appeared just yet, I expect him later. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have minutes from our last meeting, number 11-22, which was on June 7th. Are there any discussion or questions about the minutes before we call for a vote to waive the reading of the minutes and to accept them? I had one small request, which is, there was an item regarding the discussion around the skate park, but it doesn't say that it's about the skate park. It just says there were issues, but we just said regarding this skate park off of Depot Street. That's the only change I had. Any other changes for minutes? All right, so, all in favor waiving the reading of the minutes and accepting them as printed, as modified, rather? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's everybody. Thank you.
I abstained because I wasn't here last time.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Me too.
Two abstentions from Council Lawrence and Council Bradley.
I thought they were great.
We're still good, we got five to zero, so that still carries. Next, I have two announcements. One is that we have nomination papers for the November 2022 municipal election that will be available on July 28th. So, the nomination papers will be available on July 28th for the following offices in the town of Freeport. Town Council, one at-large seat, currently held by Vice Chair Egan, one District One seat, currently held by me, two seats on the Sewer District Board, one seat on the Water District Board, two seats on the RS, two three-year seats on the RSU Board, and one two-year seat on the RSU Board. Fatola, three seats on the RSU Board, one for two years, one, two for three years. The papers that are available on July 28th will need to be returned to the town clerk by September 14th of this year. And next up, we have a community resilience workshop that will be here tomorrow night in Town Council Chambers at 6 o'clock. It's scheduled to go from 6 to 8. And the workshop is about learning about the climate hazards and impacts facing Freeport, hearing about priority projects that will help the town be more resilient, and then giving input on which of those projects should be prioritized for funding. And I believe there's a grant opportunity that comes along with this, so this is prioritizing which projects would be eligible for that grant. That's tomorrow night, 6 o'clock here in Town Hall. Any other announcements from councilors?
I never know whether it's an announcement or an information exchange, so.
Probably an information exchange, which is next. So, there's no other announcements. We can move on to information exchange, and Council Bradley, you're first up.
Wow. So, I apologize for having missed the last couple of meetings, but I was honestly engaged in town business with the girls tennis team, which finished in the quarterfinals and did really well, I thought, and I think we deserve it. Thank you. I also missed a meeting, and this is all family, because I had two girls playing on the girls lacrosse team that lost in the semifinals to NYA in a thrilling game. And kudos to both teams, they were both up and down, up and down, but it was exciting to watch, and I take a tribute to the town. And I also, because I followed all the girls, learned what the boys were doing, and they almost won the states, then they lost, I think ironically, in the last half of the last inning. But it was, so, we had a wonderful sports season in town, there's probably other sports teams that I don't know about, softball and other things that, so, there's that. As a resident of the town, and I'm not sure about the appropriateness of what I'm about to say, so, don't boo or hiss me, but I've been watching the January 6 hearings, and all I'll say is that it doesn't matter whether you're Republican or a Democrat, there are amazing things being said about our country during those hearings, and I recommend them to anyone who has the time and interest in listening to them. And my final information exchange is, as you all know, I have worked with Adam and Peter very hard on the Island Rover issue, and we got some great cleanup, and we'll probably get some more before things end. The next step, as I announced at the last meeting I was at, was to go to the farm with the proposal to launch the Island Rover at the Burnett Bridge. We met Adam and Peter and I with Dave Herring, and he agreed to take the issue on behalf of the town to the board, the board met last Friday, and I'm disappointed to report they are not willing to allow the boat to be launched over their land. So, that's that.
Okay. That will likely require some further discussion at some point, but thank you for taking it as far as you did.
That won't be the end of the Island Rover for us, but it clearly is the end of any discussion with the farm about launching it over farmland into water that you need to get to over farmland.
Right. Well, thank you for your efforts to get it.
I tried.
And the progress you made. Any other items of information exchange? Council Egan.
I just want to reflect back on the great meeting we had here last Tuesday, which was a workshop with New England Mountain Bike Association and Main Trail Builders suggesting some pathways for their group to build a mountain bike trail facility on Hedgehog Mountain property owned by the town. And lots of conversation, the room was absolutely full, in fact, it was standing room only with at least a dozen people out in the hallway, biggest crowd I've seen here in years. So, there's tangible, passionate enthusiasm for that project, and the Conservation Commission, which is an official committee of the town, has that in front of them, and will be going through their process to upgrade their management plan, including looking at what the impacts would be environmentally of such a proposal. And it's encouraging to see that much enthusiasm, as well as a really well-thought-out process for something like this to happen. And it just reminded me of when we had a corporate sponsor years ago, maybe 10 or 15, 12 years ago, ready to install a synthetic track in our community, and we took quite a while to think about whether or not that was going to be the right thing to do, and much of that enthusiasm bled off because we took too long, and so, I'm really hoping that we can get to a decision on the mountain bike trail installation while New England Mountain Bike Association and the Main Trail Builders are focused on it. They're going to do 100% fundraising for the activity, and I think with some good planning and the start of some really good communication, we'll have a great, great opportunity to take a look at that. So, I'm excited about that, and I hope it continues to move forward, and I've gotten a lot of input on email and anecdotal comments, and people coming up to me saying, isn't that a great idea? And I couldn't agree more, so I'm looking forward to that happening. And then, lastly, out of that meeting inspired me to work with the Conservation Commission and find some ways to develop an idea to install, and I think it's not going to be all that unreasonable, a fully ADA accessible pathway into Florida Lake. So, we heard from a couple of folks at that meeting about, which was a workshop with the Conservation Commission, about other things besides the mountain bike trail, and that stood out, and I use Florida Lake nearly daily, because it's right down the street from where I live, and it's a fabulous resource, hardly ever anybody there, and would be a great place. It's relatively flat, except for a little hill right at the beginning, which I think we could get around and have a nice, fully accessible trail to go into the lake and let everybody get a chance to experience that beautiful spot. So, I'm going to take that up this summer and see what we can get done.
That's great, thank you, John. And I'll echo my observation that in my short time in the council, that the town has done an admirable job of paying attention to accessibility issues, more so than I had thought. So, I thank you to the manager, the planner, and all the other folks that are involved in that. I know it's not easy sometimes, but I think the town does a really good job of trying to keep things accessible and up to code, and so, thank you for that. Any other information exchange items from other councilors? Seeing none, we'll move on to the town manager's report.
We're on a speed record here, Mr. Chair, thank you. I won't ruin it too much. I've got a couple items I want to start off by thanking, start off by thanking, we have a recent retirement at the police department, actually, it's at the end of this month, which is coming up in a couple days, but effective retirement now of Officer McManus, commonly known as Mac, who's been our school resource officer for 24 years at the Freeport School System and now RSU 5 School System. So, before that, he was also an officer for 35 years, and then, before that, for a small period of time, was a reserve officer with the town as well. So, he is retiring after 35 years of full-time and service and 24 years of SRO service, and had his going-away party last week, I think it was, and it was nice to see, very well attended. I saw a bunch of people stop by from the community, from emergency services, former retired employees that were there to welcome him to the new community, and a lot of school people, it was really great to see all the school people he's worked with over the years, the administrators and, you know, department heads at the schools who've worked with him closely. And we've got new blood moving into that position, which is always exciting as well, but just want to give a huge shout-out to 35 years of service from Officer McManus, that's pretty impressive in today's society. So, thanks, Mac. And finally, just an update to the council, we discussed at our last meeting, which was now two weeks ago, painting a pride crosswalk in town, and I've met with council leadership, and I think we have decided that it will be in front of the Town Hall, so the access driveway. The council did ask for an estimate of what that would cost, because that was raised as a concern by several people, and the council committed to fundraise for that. The amount, the estimate from the Public Works Department is $875. That seems ridiculously high, but there are multiple paint colors involved, and they come in one-gallon paint cans, so that will be enough to do the lifespan of that paint's worth of crosswalks, so, you know, four or five years, however long that lasts. So, the number's not as high as it seems, that's for many years in the future. And we've already done some fundraising from members of the council who will remain nameless but can identify themselves, do what they wish, and we're, I think, seven-eighths of the way to that amount. So, anybody that does want to contribute, I think that was a concern that was raised, was to have it come from donated money, not tax money.
That's right.
So, anybody that wants to contribute, you better catch me with your $50 before, while the iron's hot, because that's all that's left. So, thank you, and, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you to Officer McManus as well for that length, lengthy service. I've had the chance to meet him, and it was a very informative meeting, and he seems like a great guy and will make some. Next up, we have our public comment period. So, the way this works is anybody from the public can come up and offer some comments. The comments should be for items that are not already on our agenda, because those items will have opportunity for public comment later. So, if you have anything you'd like to adjust the council about, now is the time, you can do it in person, you can do it on Zoom, if there is anybody on Zoom who is interested in participating. For the Zoom folks, use the raise hand feature. For the folks in the room, use the actual raising of your hand in real life. And then, we'll ask you to step to the podium, or we'll give you permission to speak on Zoom, and in either case, tell us who you are, where you're from, what you'd like to talk about, and I ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or so. Good evening.
Comment and a couple of questions. Is there going to be time to comment tonight? Is it on the agenda for cemetery trust funds and where our trust fund investments are? Is that on the agenda tonight, or can I speak about that now?
It's not, yeah, yeah, go for it.
Okay. My concern is, what's going on? I remember at one point, we discussed the investment portfolio on treasure of the Flying Point Cemetery for a cemetery in town, if anybody wants to donate. All I get is the $450 from the veterans thing, and I was told it's 1.6% was our return. I think that's pretty low, I mean, going into the future, it's probably going to be high, but I think the last five, 10 years, we should have done much better than that, and I've yet to hear a report on what happened. I know it was discussed publicly that was going to be a report, but I don't come to every meeting, so. I think you should get back to the cemeteries at least, there should be some airing of what's going on, and there should be a review of either Hall and whoever is doing the investments from the bank, I guess it's Bangor Savings, I think there needs to be some explanation in these really good times, what we're invested in and why it's done so poorly. Next item is, I went, I too went to the meeting there with the bicycle group, and I thought it was a great meeting, and I think we should set a timeline to move this forward. I think we should set a timeline when the Conservation Commission is going to come back to the council with a report. I agree that we shouldn't let it drag too long, because these guys will lose interest or something will happen in town. We have to move forward in Freeport with changing things up, and to create an atmosphere where it's more business-friendly, more user-friendly, and get some things going, because if we're standing still, we're moving backwards. And, like Ed, came in every couple of weeks with a report on the Island Rover, and I feel so bad they won't let us across their property, but Ed did a tremendous job reporting back and did yeoman's work with all his skills in the marine industry to try to get that to happen, and I thank him for that, and I know he won't give up, so, but I think the council should come back every couple of weeks with a report on what the council is doing to move this issue forward, plus the downtown issues around housing, housing in the downtown, we spent $150,000 with consultants downtown. I'd hate to see that fold up and fail, because that gets dragged too long. We're going into a climate that's not conducive to a lot of development going on, I think. We'll see what happens with money, how tight it is. Third thing is, I understand we're going to, and maybe it's on the agenda tonight, you can tell me and I'll stop, is some kind of a coordinator, we're going to share with Yarmouth on sustainability or something. Is that on the agenda tonight?
Just as a budgetary item, so keep going.
I'm against that. I understand we're going to, we're already doing something with GP Cog out of Portland on a larger coordination scale. Oil's going to be very high this winter, taxes need to be low, and this is a position we don't need to fund this time around if we're doing shared work with GP Cog, and that's the, that's what GP Cog's supposed to be for, for our communities. And for us to bail in with Yarmouth or North Yarmouth or somebody else is silly, because that's duplication of effort we don't need to pay for. I've used my three minutes up, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenal.
But please don't let this downtown thing go.
I won't, personally, I won't.
You need to report back, you know, as leadership, you guys need to report back to us where this is going.
Yep.
I'm on the planning board, been on for a couple of meetings, they're starting to work on it, and we need to push this forward so that things can happen. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I've already got some stuff to report, in fact, so the cemetery trust, Council Pillsbury and I have talked about setting up a meeting with the finance director to review our. Yeah, we've got to figure out, we're going to review the policy and say, where's the money invested, what's it doing, report back, so we'll get a report back to you and everybody else who's got money that's taken care of by the town.
When I was on the council years ago, the cemetery money, not Jessica, but previous people, cemetery must have, was invested with Fleet Bank. I had my stockbroker friend check it out for me, it was not insured, this is years ago, it was not insured, it was Columbia stock, which was Fleet Bank internal stock, they were just churning it, and we need to do better than that.
Yeah, we're going to take a look at that.
It cost me $150 every time I mowed the lawn, he wants 10 mowings, and $450 pays for three. And we're ponying up for the rest and getting shorter every day, so, you know, I know we don't get a lot out of the town, but, you know, another three or 400 bucks would go a long ways, and that's what we used to get.
Yep, yeah. We're going to look into it, I'll report back, I'd say, if not the next meeting, the one after, so sometime in July.
We all try to make cemeteries look good, public and private, and, you know, it's an honor to be able to do that for the people that are, you know, that are still living and have friends, you know, friends and relatives there, so. Thank you.
And just a note on the downtown progress, we have an implementation task force meeting Thursday night, day after tomorrow, 6 o'clock, that one's on Zoom. Anybody's welcome to attend. We're in the process of narrowing down our work plan, so we've got about a dozen projects that we're going to suggest prioritizing, we'll bring those dozen back to the council for you guys to take a look at and see if we're on the right track. In the meantime, we do, a couple of days ago, last week, last Wednesday, there was a pretty good-sized housing project for downtown that had its first showing at the Project Review Board. So, it was several units, I don't remember the numbers, 60 or 70?
60.
60, yeah. So, there's definitely, 67, yeah, even more. So, we've got things going on for downtown, for sure. And the bikes at Hedgehog Mountain, the mountain bike trails, the Conservation Commission has given themselves a deadline of December of this year to update the management plan. If we have other instructions or actions that we want to take before then, we can certainly do that as a council, but they're charged with managing the land and recommending a management plan for us to approve, and right now, that's going to happen sometime by December. Council Bradley?
I'm delighted to hear, I'm sorry. I'm delighted to hear there's a housing project at Project Review. My question is, there was a fair amount of design discussion during the revisioning process about what would be a good look, what would be a good feel for Depot Street? Does any of that get into that process, or is this totally standalone what the investor wants and what the project review will approve?
Yeah, I'm going to do my best to answer that question, because it's actually a complex one, but based on my understanding, the, we have not updated our design review guidelines since our downtown vision plan has been completed. So, what's on the books is what was on the books from before then. There are quite a number of standards that you have to meet if you want to propose a project, especially in downtown, because there's two or three design districts that would all apply. So, the Project Review Board has to be governed by what's on the books today, rather than what they would like to see or what was recommended by the vision plan. But one of the items on our work plan going forward is to update the design guidelines with what came out of the vision plan.
But the applicant can bring forward whatever they see is in their interests, and I guess the question is, is anybody in town talking with them to try to convince them that some of the things that are in the downtown plan would be in their interest for whatever reasons we can come up with?
I know that they were involved in the downtown visioning process, so, yes.
No, that's not a yes.
There have been conversations happening.
Absolutely, they talked directly with the consultants while they were developing their plans.
So, okay, I don't know how to get at this without getting the state response that we always are on top of everything, but what I'd like to be sure of is that all of those things that Russ and the principal group talked to us about as options get filtered down into something as big as that, as the first project coming out of downtown, and if there needs to be a way to incentivize that, then I'd be certainly open to hearing what that is, and if it's different than what they would propose for purely economic reasons, whether it's higher, we talked about higher things, we could do right off the top, because we have the power to do that, if we wanted to use it. I'm not trying to impose my will or thoughts on anybody, I just think that that, that's a big project, and it's perfectly consistent with the money we spend, and I'd love to be able to say, boy, right out of the box, we accomplished something that's not only provides the housing we need, but it's in the style that we wanted, and it adds to the feel of Depot, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yeah, I do, and one thing that has come up before, when we had met with FEDC, was the idea of floating a TIF district specifically for that purpose, right, to say, even though this project may meet the standards officially, we would really like to see it developed this way, that way, higher, lower, with certain design elements, and we're willing to incentivize you to do it. The sort of guiding principle that we were under is it's probably better to have that apply uniformly to all the projects that are probably going to be coming before us over the next couple of years, rather than do a deal with one developer for this project, do a deal, a different deal with a different developer for a different project. So, that's, that discussion is happening. Brett Richardson and FEDC is kind of spearheading that, I think you guys have talked, and that's probably the tool that we have to exert our influence at the moment, until we get to updating our design guidelines.
I don't think it's too late, though, for, if we were to get some enthusiasm and general consensus about what. general consensus about what might be in such a district, I think we could still capture this project as well.
Right, it might be a really small thing, like a facade or something, you know, that would make us feel, as opposed to, ooh.
Yeah, I'd encourage all you to check the project review meetings, either the one that just happened last week, and they'll be back, it's a long process, they have, I think, two or three.
Short, short, now, it's going to be.
Who's the developer, who is the developer?
Hillary Rocket. Hillary Rocket. Big developer from Brunswick.
Yeah, Council Fornier?
This gets back to our discussion, we're working on it now, but our zoning and design review and everything. Does that, from this discussion at this point, do we need to prioritize that and to move that to a quicker agenda to, so we don't put needless roadblocks and needless hurdles up when we're eventually, hopefully, to get there to be a more friendly community to do business in? I think that's all we all want. So if we're, if we're hearing of items such as maybe design review or whatever, I, I guess as one counselor, it would be more than in favor of trying to fast track to correct some of the issues we've had over the past and not create needless roadblocks.
Yeah, good point, I'll point out that there's, there's some contradictory opinions, right? In the sense that if we want to influence how projects are developed, and we want it to look a certain way, and to be a certain size, and have certain income guidelines, the more restrictions and influence we want to have, the slower, more cumbersome we make the process. We can't do both, right? We can't say, speed it up, make it friendlier, make it easier, but at the same time, now we have additional requirements you have to meet. So that, we have to balance that, along with our friends in the planning board and Project Review Board and the town planner. We did set aside money in the budget that we will probably approve later today for a consultant to help us re, I'll say, update our design guidelines. So that, in theory, should happen pretty soon, based on capacity, I think.
I think one thing, so, not to give a false sense of everything being rosy and great of this project, I mean, it's, it's fine, but the developer is developing to what's on the books today, and they are not asking for a single thing for the town, other than to approve what they're putting forward. So we talk about, you know, leverage or influence, they don't want or need anything from us, unlike several other developments that we're working with that may be asking for waivers, maybe asking for, you know, density, high parking restrictions, things like that. The developer in this project, as far as I'm aware, unless something's changed since that meeting that I watched as well, they are designing cookie cutter to the current standards, and they, we legally have to approve that within, you know, the timeframe that the Project Review Board's given to review it, if the board feels that it meets the current standards. That's not, I can't change that, but the board has to make that deliberation, that decision.
Is that a response to my comment?
Yeah.
Okay, then my comment back to that is, and that's perfectly all right, and that's how we do business, and what we get is what the developer puts on, and which makes economic sense. And what I'm saying is, we've been through 150, 200, 300,000 dollar downtown revisioning project, which has identified housing and housing design and look as an important element of redoing our downtown. And there's nothing to keep us as a community from sitting down, not, independent of the project review and saying, look, would you think about these things, if they're in your interest, and they, you know, talk, have somebody who's got the lead on that to talk to them about how they might be doing what they're planning to do, not to threaten them, not to put new restrictions on them, but just to ask them whether there's something in there that they wouldn't mind doing to meet our needs. And I don't know who, is it Brett or somebody like that who knows this stuff, knows how to talk about it with a developer, I certainly don't. And I'm, and I'm not looking for the legal response that we're doing everything by the book, I get that, we always do. But here's, here's an opportunity, I think, if I'm wrong, just say, Ed, you're wrong, and I shut up. See what I mean?
I wasn't saying you were wrong, I was actually kind of agreeing with what you said before.
I see it now.
Sorry, I didn't mean to give the impression.
But I guess my point is.
I was arguing in agreement with you.
Oh, good. Then, but then I'm, then my question is, who is it that's taking the downtown plan ideas to a developer who's trying to meet old standards? And is perfectly prepared to do a project that we would have to approve if they met the old standards?
So that's part of the problem, is that if, to any extent, and again, agreeing with you here, Ed, to the, any extent, and I think agreeing with what Dan said, to any extent that that anything in the downtown vision conflicts with what's in our ordinances currently, we can't tell them not to follow our current standards, that's the problem, we, they have to follow the current standards.
I'm not being very articulate, apparently. What I'm trying to say is, outside of design review, outside of the world of regulation and approval and application, there is a world called downtown revisioning, which we are committed to. This town is committed to. Here's a new developer coming into our town, you'd think they'd want to know what we were looking for, and would be willing, maybe, to do some of it without telling them you have to do it, just because we wanted to. And if there was something, they said, well, gee, we'd love to do that, but it might cost a little more money. We're in a position to say, well, maybe we can provide a little more money, or maybe they need some parking relaxation. We're in a position where we can give them that, this council is. I'm just trying to find some room to make sure we follow the benefits of having gone through all the downtown revisioning and not get stuck in the world of today's design review is is what we got, and we got to work with it, and we'll take whatever comes out of it, because that's the, that's the rule. I'm not saying, go tell them they got to do something, I'm saying, ask them.
To some extent, that happens with every project, with multiple pre-application meetings with staff, with an entire array of staff.
Who is doing that from a revisioning point of view, a downtown revisioning point of view? Who's sitting in on those meetings saying, here's what we would like to see, would you consider it?
So those are usually, there's seven staff members, the planner is the lead on those usually, that sit down with them?
And she's, and she, I mean, she's a great planner, please.
And they're, and they're, and that's, and that's kind of what I was getting to at the first point, is that they're made aware, you know, a year ago, a year and a half ago, two years ago, when they start their application process and their investigation, we're doing this downtown revisioning process, you need to meet with Russ, you need to meet with the group, and they set them up for meetings. Several developers, not all, but several developers that were considering projects and are still considering projects in downtown, had one-on-one meetings with principal group that both contributed to the vision, but also contributed to their development plans. A lot of people changed some of their ideas, I don't want to make, I'm not trying to make some judgment that the plan currently in front of us for that project is perfectly in compliance with everything that Russ would have designed if he gave him a sheet of paper, and we would have gotten a vision plan. I can't make that judgment, and I don't know how accurate it is, because I haven't been involved in the process, but they do have, they had, when principal was here, they had numerous interactions, not just this development in question, but I would say several of them. And our staff continues to say, hey, we've got this vision plan, I mean, I know another developer that's not one that's in question that may come up in the next month or so, was convinced to come to Freeport because of the downtown process happening, and came in and was influenced in that respect with, oh, Freeport wants to do all these things I also want to do, and that's why we're seeing an application from this other developer. But the actual, I mean, we don't need to rehash the carrot and the stick conversation, we have very limited sticks. We have to use the sticks that are enshrined in our ordinances, and I'm not saying somebody does or doesn't want to do things nicely, I mean, I think all the developers working with seem, currently seem to be very cooperative and trying to work with us, and they're going for similar things as what the town is going for in the downtown area, I think, but we are still severely limited in what we can force somebody to do if our ordinances don't support it, so that's.
Or incentivize, yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah, they did meet with Russ on this one, he did provide some feedback and some suggestions, some of which they took under advisement and made some tweaks to their plan, some of which they didn't. And we can continue to discuss, I'm monitoring the project just through the Project Review Board, I don't have any special backroom insight into it, I'm just kind of going to the meetings and seeing what I see and offering my comments. So, I'll continue to do that. Council Daniele?
Could we add something to our ordinances? You know, set a public hearing, all that kind of stuff, quickly, just to say, you know, we'd like it to developers to have to reference the downtown revisioning or be aware of, like, is there any, I don't want to rewrite everything ourselves, but is there any little thing that we could put in there that would give us just a, hey, we just want to make sure you're checking out and you're complying with sort of what we're going for here. Maybe you guys can just think about it.
Yeah, we need to go to the planning, right?
Yeah, it's going to, that would have to come, originate from the planning board, that's not meant to say it couldn't happen, just the path it would have to take.
Interesting idea, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, by law, any zoning changes have to originate at the planning board, so.
Yeah, it's a good idea, Jake, I'll ask Caroline about that. We are still in our public comment session. We kind of took over the public comment, made it a council comment session, but we do have more time for public comment, if anybody wants to come up to the podium and tell us who you are and what you want to talk about.
You use that long opportunity to think about what you want to say.
My name's Lance Pletcher, live down on South Freeport Road. And I'm here to ask you, our group is here to ask you to consider changing the building code. Everybody is probably aware, the legislature approved, the town council approved MUBEC, Main Uniform Building and Energy Code, which contains the 2015 Energy Code. The 2021 Energy Code was included by the legislature last year in the stretch code, the MUBEC stretch code. And as codes go, the 2021 was a significant leap beyond the small incremental changes that were made between 2009, where we used to be. And they make changes every three years. And the 2021, they really took a leap. It's 10 to 15% more energy efficient, a building built to that, to those standards, than the code that we now have. Buildings are made more comfortable, they're made cheaper to operate by far. The incremental costs of implementing this as you're building, and it's all for new construction, is about 1% or less of the construction cost. And the payback starts the first winter. The figures that I have seen, and I have a technical request into the building codes program of the U.S. Department of Energy to further, to get further information, but what, for what I've seen, the savings begin the first year, and the payback for that investment is roughly in the three-year range. After that, the savings continue, and as we all know, the costs, the prices of energy are not going to go down, so as the prices of energy go up, the savings go up, and they continue into the future. The, there are studies, several studies that have been done around the country saying that more energy efficient buildings have higher value, and it stands to reason. If it's going to cost you less to operate it, then you're willing to pay a little bit more upfront to buy it. The, I mentioned the dollar savings will increase. Basically, in terms of codes, the 2021 IECC was a significant improvement. We all know that the old saying, journey of a thousand miles starts with one step. We got to go 1,000 miles, we've got to go fast. This step, in terms of that trip, is a small, is a small step, to be sure. But it's a first step, and frankly, we ought to take it. And to further speak to this, Bob Stevens, there's some more information.
Before you come up, Mr. Stevens, we do have this item on our agenda. It's at the very end. We'll be talking about introducing the building codes under other business, and we'll probably wind up having a pretty good lengthy discussion about it at the end of the meeting. I don't think it'll be a terribly long meeting, I always say that, and I'm always wrong, but.
Write that down.
I don't see anything that.
Now that the chair has predicted a short meeting, you better buckle up to 11 o'clock tonight, so.
Tends to be how things work around here.
Can you go get me one, too, in the three hours you have until it comes back?
Any other public comment about any other items? Anybody on Zoom interested in talking to us tonight?
We have one media, one member of the media on Zoom right now, and that's it.
Yeah, Council Pillsbury, Council, or, yes. Well, I think we can tonight, given that it's an item that was somewhat citizen initiated, or, you know, there are a number of citizens interested in talking about, but thank you for bringing that up, because often we don't, so I appreciate that. All right, so, after public comment, we have the action portion of our agenda, where we have a number of items that will require us to take votes. Following that, we have one item of other business that we just talked about. So the first of the action items is in reference to our consent agenda, which we passed as a group of items. Tonight, it has two items on it, one is about appointing our deputy clerk to the Legislative Policy Committee for the Main Municipal Association, and the other is to accept some donations for our library.
And I did check with the town of Harpswell, and they were more than happy to have our deputy take that position, so.
Awesome, thank you, and thank you to Carrie for offering.
Yeah, she'll be great for that, she'll also need to be elected by essentially, I think it's only us in Harpswell that have a say in it, right, and that, there's two members of our senate district, but one gets appointed by Brunswick and one by everybody else, so. I think it's just up in Harps, us in Harpswell, but there may be another party that is to vote on that, so. She's not in the clear yet, but probably she'll end up being the rep if Harpswell's not putting someone forward.
Any reason we should separate these consent agenda items and consider them individually? Hearing none, I will make a motion, be it ordered, that the June 21st, 2022 consent agenda be adopted?
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. Our next item is item 120-22, which is about a public hearing for a liquor license for the Nicholson Inn. So let's open the public hearing, and then we'll invite you to come up to speak. Council Pillsbury, would you open the public hearing?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in a public hearing for the liquor license for the Nicholson Inn. If anyone would like to speak, come up to the podium, tell us who you are.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for considering our application, this is my wife, Loretta, I'm John Boland. We're thrilled to be part of the community, we've had a great time starting our business over at the Nicholson Inn, and we thought this would be something that we'd be able to help accommodate our guests as they stay here, to be able to have an enjoyable time on vacation here in Freeport. And again, we have, we live on premise, so we're mature, responsible adults, and we'll obviously be there to make sure that everything is done, you know, appropriately. So we would welcome the ability to have a liquor license and be able to serve wine, beverages, and spirits to our guests.
Welcome to Freeport, thank you for bringing the business here.
Glad to be here.
I've been following your Instagram account and very jealous of what you serve there already, so.
We like to cook, we like food. We like exploring the great things that the state and the town here have.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, Council Pillsbury, would you read the next motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Council Fornier, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now out of the public hearing, and Council Pillsbury, one more time, would you read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a new liquor license for the Nicholson Inn be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence, any further discussion at the council about the new liquor license for the Nicholson Inn? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, congratulations, and welcome again. All right, our next.
I have one question, when, when is the council banquet?
I was just going to say, Ed, and once we have it, if you'd like to walk over after meeting and have a nice glass of wine, you'd be great and welcome.
Be careful what you offer, our meetings sometimes last quite a while. Yeah. I don't think we've crossed midnight yet, but we've come close a couple of times.
Including tonight, apparently.
No, 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 tonight's going to be true. So our next item, 121-22, is about a public hearing for a liquor license for the Sunrise Cafe, but they have since informed us that they are withdrawing their liquor license application, so I would propose that we table this indefinitely. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to table item 121-22.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence.
Just procedurally, if you table something, isn't it, for the future sometime? Is, if they're withdrawing, are they withdrawing it now so they can get ready for something later?
They withdrew their application, they didn't indicate that they're going to come back or not come back. We're not putting a date on it, on the tabling, is there another?
I don't know what the other procedure.
I don't know what the other procedure is, that's why I suggested this one, yeah. Yeah.
Bring it up?
If we just skip it?
Deny it, and then they'd have to reapply, and then you wouldn't have something hanging on your books that, you know, I don't care.
on your books that, you know, I don't care.
Let me just ask our clerk, who's the most, of everyone who's unfamiliar with liquor licensing guidelines up here, she's the most unfamiliar, the least unfamiliar with them. Is there a damage that's done by voting something down on a property that goes to the state for review? Is there any negative that you could think of to denying it?
Right.
No, I would deny, they withdrew, there's no sale.
Nothing to vote on, yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing to vote on.
So we got three alternatives. Don't motion and second it for discussion. We could have a second to your suggestion, which would be to table it.
Which we do.
Or we could deny it. Out of those three, they all accomplish the same thing. Procedurally, is there any preference that you would have?
I would use withdraw.
Yeah, it was withdraw.
Drawn by the applicant.
There's nothing to vote on.
Skip it over?
It's not going to the state, it's just being pulled off the public hearing.
Skip it over and don't take it up for discussion, then?
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing to.
They withdraw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Am I going to move to skip it over? I'll make a motion to skip it, but.
We can modify our agenda by a vote as well, so we could just take the item off the agenda.
We could just move to drop it from the agenda.
Yep. All right. So we, we do have a motion on the floor to table it, so I suggest we vote that down and then take up another motion to.
Do we have a second on that, then?
We do, Council Lawrence, yeah, yeah.
Can you remove your motion?
Not once it's out there. So all in favor of tabling the item? All opposed to tabling the item?
Aye.
All right. Seven to zero, we're not tabling the item. Would anyone care to make a motion to remove this item from our agenda?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to withdraw from our, withdraw this request from our agenda.
Our agenda. Thank you, Council Lawrence. Thank you, Council Bradley. All in favor of removing the item from our agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, so we're not going to take that item up. Which moves us to item 122-22, which is about a public hearing for a special amusement permit, which we affectionately called a fun permit, for the Freeport Oyster Bar. We'll start with a public hearing on that. So Council Fornier, would you open the public hearing?
Certainly. Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have a public hearing open for a special amusement permit for the Freeport Oyster Bar. Anybody care to make a comment on special amusements at the Freeport Oyster Bar?
Motion to close public hearing.
Thank you, Council Fornier.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Bradley, were you in on that? Council Bradley, yes, okay. So seven to zero. Council Fornier, would you read the be it ordered?
I can't. Be it ordered that a new liquor license for the, oh, I'm sorry. Be it ordered that a special amusement permit for Freeport Oyster Bar be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. Any other discussion about the fun permit? Nope. All in favor of the special amusement permit?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Congratulations to the Freeport Oyster Bar. The next item, also dealing with fun, making fun easier to have in Freeport, we have a suggestion to repeal an ordinance that deals with pinball and video machines. So would you care to introduce this item, Mr. Manager?
This goes way back to Fiorello LaGuardia, the esteemed mayor of New York City in the 1940s. No, I think so. I think that was the timeframe, well before my time. So 30s, 40s, USA, pinball was a common evil influence on the youth, and there was some truth in that, that it was used for gambling. There's also a little truth that it was probably non, you know, non-syndicate approved gambling in New York City that didn't fall under certain people. It wasn't the right type of gambling. That wasn't controlled correctly. But anyways, it led to a crackdown municipally across the country on pinball machines, which had odorous licensing requirements until the 70s and 80s in many jurisdictions, either outright prohibition or licensing requirements. One of the relics of that is a, of that kind of mindset that we have to regulate video games and pinball machines and stop them being evil influence on children in town is shown by ordinance chapter 44 in the Town of Freeport Code of Ordinances, which regulates pinball and video games. Coin-operated or anything that takes cash in exchange for some type of play feature. So that actually, we were asked whether it would include cards, like what are modern, you know, you put cash into a machine, it gives you plays on a card. The way that the ordinance is worded does actually cover cards, electronic payment, anything like that. So, but they're typically coin-op machines. All that we can tell staff looking at this is it essentially makes revenue for the town if anybody ever wanted to put in a video game arcade. We don't have any video games arcade in, any video arcades in town. We have not for at least the 10 years that I've been here, but this would in theory generate, I put it in here, $50 per game, or $100 per game. So for somebody who's operating an arcade with like 50 games, it would be $5,000 a year in licensing fees. So it would in theory be a revenue generator for the town. I don't know why that exists, why we feel like that that somehow creates a demand or a draw on general services to the town otherwise that would exist, you know, from a bowling alley, for example, if the video game arcade wasn't attached to it. Any other type of fun, including dancing in an alcohol service, serving establishment? No fee for that. No fee for jukeboxes. Maybe they would be coin-op, I don't know. No fee for bowling, no fee for, you know, indoor racquetball courts, anything that you want to do to entertain yourself. But pinball machines definitely have a fee attached to them. This is somewhat significant. We've had people sniffing around about the opportunity to open a retro video game arcade in town, and it hasn't materialized. This was not cited as being something that would stop it from happening, but it was a head-scratcher, and a lot of people felt like, whoa, that's a little overbearing, people who were looking at it. It hasn't, I would say if it had killed something, I'd use that as justification, but it has not killed any projects, but it may help in the future to speed a project up that someone's There's one other thing that's fled my mind. Oh, when there are. Yeah, there's, there's a little, there's a little problematic clause that we try to not use anymore, which is the applicant has to be of good moral character. And that was usually generally used to disqualify people with convictions like marijuana possession and things like that in other parts of the country. It has been struck down, I'm not saying it was ever used for discriminatory purposes in Freeport, but it has been struck down as being discriminatory against different racial groups and against people of lower income. Both of those potentially problematic. That's not the case here. I don't want to give the impression it's the case here, that that's been alleged, but we like to get those kind of things out of ordinances where they don't really have any need. You know, if someone's reformed and has gone through their time in prison, this is like you can't open a restaurant. You couldn't open a restaurant in Freeport under the Victorius license if you had a felony conviction on your record. Well, I'll tell you what, there's not a lot of work opportunities open to someone to start a business if they have a felony conviction on their record. Sometimes people want to be cooks, and this would not let that happen. Very similar in this video game arcade licensing. So it's old. I'd love to get your feedback and the public's feedback. Maybe staff is way off base, and this is something important, and we do need to regulate, you know, regulate that video game arcade or that pinball. But, I mean, my kid carries his video game around with him, and he's six, so I think I'm probably way too far gone on that one to be preaching moral high ground on regulating video games, so.
Maybe we should license portable video games. You require your son to pay a license.
We generate a lot more revenue, that's for sure.
So before us tonight, we're just setting a public hearing for July 5th, so that we can get input from the public on whether or not it's a good idea to get rid of this. So, Councilor Fornier, you look like you have something to say.
Just have a question. Why can't, why do we need to have a public hearing? I think there's probably enough knowledge sitting here, and it has not been an issue for 40 years. Why can't we just take care of it? My question.
You want to take that one?
Well, because somebody 40 years ago, whenever it was put in place, made it an ordinance, so it's really tough to get rid of without going through those hoops.
Yeah. If we're going to change any ordinances, we have to, we're required to have a public hearing. Yeah, it's just a process thing. We can't just, it makes sense, you don't want us to be able to just change an ordinance without giving anybody notice. So this is the notice saying we're changing ordinance.
I think, I agree with Council Fornier, there's going to be no interest to keep this around that I'm aware of, but maybe we'll be surprised.
So it should be a short item at the next meeting.
I think I've given all the background that we probably need, unless somebody brings something up from the public, is how their life was ruined by compulsive pinball gaming or something like that, that I'm not aware of.
So, Councilor Lawrence, would you read the be it ordered and the be it further ordered?
Sure. Having been a victim of these video games and pinball games, I am more than happy to read. I've been destroyed by them. Be it ordered that the public hearing be set for July 5th, 2022, at the town council meeting that starts at 6:00 PM to discuss the repeal of the Freeport ordinance chapter 44. Pinball and video games. Be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk office, the town manager's office, Freeport Community Library, for inspection by citizens during normal business hours, and the notice be placed on the Freeport's local cable channel three and the town's website.
Second. Thank you, Council Daniele. Any other discussion on this, about setting the public hearing only? All in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. We have a public hearing on July 5th. Next up, we have a request to use our Memorial Park on Bow Street for a couple of dates this summer that I think Council Egan is going to introduce to us.
I don't think he.
Or maybe not.
I think John's going to recuse himself. Well, I won't vote, but I can, I can introduce. Yeah, so the request is for two dates, on August 6th and September 3rd, which is a couple of Saturdays, for folk music in Memorial Park. I'm not going to vote on this because I'm a part of the request. So I collaborate with a couple of other folks that are listed in the paperwork in your, in your packet, to produce lo-fi folk concerts around different places. We all weathered 49 degrees and howling rainy winds on Sunday down at Wolfneck Park, Wolfneck Farm, rather, was our first one of the season. We're hoping for better weather on these, as well as music out at Desert Main. So lots of music opportunities around this summer, and this is a opportunity to get more enthusiasm related to the downtown plan, of people coming to Memorial Park for a fun event. And so it's an entire Saturday afternoon, four hours of free music at Memorial Park on those two dates, 6th and 3rd of September.
Thank you, Councilor Egan. So, Council Bradley, you have a question?
I, it's an application for the Arts and Cultural.
They're the ones providing the insurance, and they're co-sponsoring the event.
Okay. And this is, and then there's another group that's actually doing it. Promoting the group, I mean, whatever you're doing.
Right.
Okay. And that's you and John and other people?
Right.
Okay. Got it. Curious about how I was putting together.
So, Councilor Daniele, yes, please, would you read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the use of town property requested by ACF, ACAF, for Bow Street Park on August 6th, 2022, and September 3rd, 2022 be approved.
Second.
Any discussion questions on this? Nope. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on item 124-22. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one refusal or abstention? Abstention. So six to zero to one, with Councilor Egan abstaining. All right. Next, we have, I think it's got to get a couple more signatures, and then it can go down to Chris. Item 125-22 is about another use of town property. This is for the Met, the new coffee shop on Main Street, and I think our town manager's going to give us more background on this. I think we saw, heard, talked about this once before.
Yeah, I can actually summarize it pretty quickly. I think the owner of the Met, the new owner, the owner of the new restaurant, the Met, approached us to say, hey, could we do a pocket park type of setup in front of our building? And unfortunately, there's not the road width there, the parking isn't there, the street narrows, and there's a turning lane in front. And we said, no, we can't, but how'd you like to put some outdoor seating in the public right-of-way off of the road, so you don't, we don't have to use barriers, jersey barriers, and platforms and things like that? And he was extremely enthusiastic about it, and this was last week, and said, how do I do that? And I said, send Caroline an email requesting it, and we'll put it on the council agenda. So it's here in front of you. This is essentially a request to allow the restaurant to use the sidewalk, the brick sidewalk, for a few feet in front of their, where their restaurant is, in the corner of the Levi's building. It's actually not their property, it's Greg Bullos, the landlord's property, Bullos Group. It's outside of their lease envelope, like maybe a foot of it, and probably two feet of it, or three feet of it are on the public right-of-way. So the town property. So they submitted this use. They're proposing to use cafe tables, approximately four. We did get some feedback. We sent it for a cursory accessibility review by a ADA-specified architect, and we got some feedback about the actual design, so there's going to need to be a little bit of modification what they proposed, but the general location stays the same. They need to look at their, the tables they expect, at least one of them would have to be ADA-compliant. They do not appear to be, but I'd have to see them in person. The actual table has to have an overhang at a certain height to be accessible for somebody using a wheelchair. So it was recommended one of the four be an accessible design, not a round top design. And then also, some type of detectable, if you're looking at the front of the building, on the left and the right of the seating area, whether it's a planter or some type of a low rope, it's got to be about 27 inches or lower, and that's for cane detection, for somebody who's visually impaired, if they're walking down the street, so you don't just walk into a table and chair that you don't, that you can't feel is there. So some type of hard surface or low rope or stanchion-type design right on the back of where the chair would be. That's why you see a lot of outdoor restaurants that either have ropes or barriers, barricades, something like that around them. So, oh, and the umbrella would have to make sure that it doesn't extend the actual horizontally into the right-of-way, or it would have to be up eight feet, just like a sign would have to be. So need a little bit of modification to what they're proposing, but not, definitely doable. We've shared that with the landlord. I don't, I mean, there may be a little bit of a financial change to that for them, but we're not proposing at this time. We do not have a standard fee rental scenario. We may want to examine that long-term, but in the efforts of trying to get some outdoor activity on Main Street, we're just pushing this through, and I think if it gets to be so popular that we need to start renting our sidewalks and pocket parks, we can worry about that in the future. But right now, that's not the proposal, it's just to let them put four tables in front of their business.
All right. Sounds like a great idea. Council Bradley, would you read the be it ordered for item 125-22?
Be it ordered that the use of town property request for the Met be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. Any other discussion on this? Council Pilsbury?
Just to clarify, so that'll be approved pending their ADA compliance?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you can put that in the motion if that, if that helps, that they, you know, it has to meet ADA standards. Those are the three items that were, anything else that comes up during the process, they'd obviously have to change, or we could tell them, get off the sidewalk if something else is discovered.
Any other comments?
I have full faith in town staff to be able to do this.
Yeah. I'm looking at the permit to see if it says it in there. It just says they have to comply with the, all applicable laws of the, of the state and town of Freeport, and conditions granted by the application.
That would be a law of the state, for sure. Yeah, that, that form is not really the right fit for this use, but we just needed them to fill out something. The insurance stuff actually is applicable, so we're going to use the same insurance as we would for somebody using a town building or.
And do they have that, or have they submitted it? I don't see it attached to the permit.
Chris, did you get insurance along with that? Not yet, right?
On the Met?
Yeah.
They didn't name us as additionally insured yet, so I sent it back, telling them it had to be added on.
You saw their policy, they forwarded their policy, but.
And it has the coverage.
Okay. So that would obviously wouldn't issue until we saw that from them.
Any other discussion? All right, call for a vote on 125-22 for the Met, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. And that was Bradley and Lawrence, Chris, on that one. Okay, now we are on to our finance items, some budget-related items, one, two, three, four items regarding budget and finance.
Want me to mention those two things?
Yeah, why don't Jessica introduce it first, then you can update us if you need to. You look nervous, good evening.
So these next items before you are just our standard order of budget adoption. Before you get too far into it, there are, I just want to point out two adjustments that were made. In particular, the item 129-22, when we get to the capital budget appropriation, that was increased by 20, $37,000 from the Public Works truck chassis replacement for Truck Six. We had initially come to you in the plan with that being $190,000. We went out for bids with, upon the approval of the plan, we went out to bid, and the bids came in much higher, so this reflects what the, those bids came in at, which is $227,000. So I included that in this total so that you would have a solid number to work with prior to appropriating the funds. But I did want to point out that that is an increase from what was initially requested in the plan. And the second item is under item, I guess it's the same item but further down, under the last, be it further ordered, for the use of ARPA funding. We included the $40,000 for the fire rescue radio upgrades that was requested or brought forth by council, so. Just want to point out those two changes. Everything else is, as has been deliberated over the last eight weeks.
I would add the vehicle, the change to the Public Works truck, we've got our Public Works superintendent here to talk with you about that afterwards. It's kind of weird because the appropriation order comes up first, but there's actually a bid award, and if there's any interest in discussing that before you choose whether or not to make that change in this budget order. I do know that they were given two quotes, and both of them exceeded the estimate from four months, six months ago, and one was two years out.
Minimum.
One was two years out, and it was still higher than $190,000, and the other one is for immediate delivery, at least of the chassis that's on hand, and that one came in at $37,000 higher. So you can see the bid results that are further down. We didn't want to assume that by putting it in here, it's not trying to assume that that's what you're going to approve, but it's just there in case we do go ahead with it, that it's all included in the total, we don't have to go and scramble. But that's definitely up for deliberation if the council wants to discuss it. But otherwise, nothing has changed from, in these budget numbers in front of you, from the last series of deliberations we had beside those two items Jessica mentioned.
Correct.
Council Fornier? Do we ask questions now or later on?
We can ask questions now about this since it's, as they said, it's, it's part of the budget that we're about to approve, so it's fair and appropriate to ask questions about it.
I've got two questions. One is under the Public Works power truck, and you know the question I'm going to ask you, Earl, is that we should not be seeing in future truck replacements, we'll be looking at chassis replacements, because my understanding, by buying this truck, we will have stainless steel dump bodies, which will have an extended life period, hopefully they will last at least two chassis, is that correct?
Yes, that is the plan.
Okay. That's, that's the right answer. Thank you. I have another question, I guess for the fire chief. Chief, we were talking about the last meeting about upgrading the radios for the digital capacities. One thing I failed to ask at the last meeting is under our EMA, we have a EMA center that we use in event of natural disasters, major events. Will those radios be capaci, able and to communicate with the PD as the rest of them?
No, not those radios. They're, those radios, what is left there is one single radio, and it is analog.
One?
One. We used to have three radios out there.
Right, they were bought through from the county and federal money, those.
Those were analog radios. They wouldn't work with the capacity of the PD frequency because they don't have the digital key in them, but we're down to one radio in that area.
Yeah. All right, hmm, just an item next for later on. I, I guess, that, I'm puzzled because we had a fully operation EMA.
What'd be truthful is the utilization of buildings changed.
Oh, okay, well, then maybe we need to have a further discussion at this point. So we don't have a, a facility now to operate there like we did?
Not in the original plan.
No? Guess that concerns me a little bit, maybe that can be addressed later on, I'll have a discussion with the manager so I don't take time up here, but thank you, chief.
Any other budget-related questions?
Is this under like, yeah, I guess, the G P C O G climate work plan. When it was first presented, it was $6,000, now I see here it's $12,000?
I have always had that at 12. I don't know.
I thought it was a $6,000, I always had it at 12? Well, I.
I don't recall a $10,000.
Was it, was there a different number?
This year was 6,000, I believe.
Oh, they re-approved some money back in January, so for like phase one of the plan?
Yes.
Was that $6,000? So that might be what you're thinking about.
Okay, so what is this one? This is ongoing money we're spending to.
This is.
I thought it was.
The remainder of the plan or just phase two?
This is the, yeah, phase two is the remainder.
There's only two phases, and this is for the rest of it.
Yeah.
And this is our portion, right? Several, if I remember right, several towns are getting together for this climate action plan headed up in G P C O G?
This one, I think, is only, this is the, if we, if the council appropriated this, we did, I want to say talk about this in January or December, so I don't want to contradict what we talked about then and get it wrong, I probably will, it's okay. You can yell at me. The, phase one was to start the work this year, and it would be freestanding. Phase two would be to complete a climate action plan in addition to the phase one work that's already underway right now. So it's separate, it's kind of like a, this chunk of work and this would add on to it over here. Together, they would make up a climate action plan, but we did not. Yep, September, was it back then?
I, I don't know, I remember we talked about it, I remember there was a phase two coming, but I don't remember the detail.
Yeah, I don't remember discussing the phase two part of it, I only remember the $6,000 part, so I was kind of, and I, I kind of have a problem now because we just got bids back from people for projects that we have to do that are more expensive because of the current climate, or current, didn't mean to say that, or maybe I did, maybe that was a pun, but the current environment that we're working in, with inflation going where it is, I don't see spending money on that as being prudent for the town because we don't know what we're going to be needing money for. I understand it's an important project, but I don't think it's important enough to be one of the projects that we need to be spending the money on right now because of what we might be facing in the very near future. You know, everyone, I just tried to fill up my oil tank and it was $13,000, or $1,300. That was, and a year and a half ago, it was $400. I don't have a problem paying that, but I'm sure there are a lot of people that do, and this winter's going to be tough. So if we have things like this in the budget, and I know this is a last-minute thing, but we should be trying to save as much as we can going forward because everything's going to be more expensive. You know, and we're moving all these things out of the reserves, are these things, reserves going to pay for things for these different items?
That section, that section that you're referring to is what was pulled out of the budget and designated with ARPA funds.
Okay, so those are being paid by ARPA.
Right, so there's, even, even with the removal of that, you will not reduce the tax burden.
Right. So I.
Not to say you can't, I'm just saying, there, there won't be a tax impact by removing that from your appropriation.
I get that, but it's, every little bit helps.
Of course.
So, I'm, I, I'd like to make a motion that we remove that part from, from this just because it's a little bit more money that we might have for a future use for somebody in the town. Not somebody, but a bunch of people. So I'll make a motion, remove, what is it? The G P C O G climate change plan, remove the $12,000 for the G P C O G change plan so that we have, we got to start reducing other ways, I don't think we should be spending money that way right now.
I'll second the discussion.
Any, anybody want to comment or discuss? Council Egan?
We could spend a lot of time talking about the validity of what G P C O G's work with us looks like and why it's important, but the specific purpose of putting it into this category was to use the federal ARPA allocation that we have, which is one-time money, to pay for one-time expenses, and that's the reason why it's in there and not in some other place in our operating budget or some other place in our capital budget. So I feel like we're, we're, we're trying to be penny-wise and pound foolish here in that we're not taking advantage of a federal pass-through allocation of funds through ARPA to pay for something that would otherwise have to be absorbed in an operating budget or a capital budget. So that was the purpose of moving that item with those, with those others into that ARPA category.
So you're saying that, saying that was a mandatory fund that we have to pay to the county, it's not a voluntary fund?
No, not saying it's mandatory, I'm saying that.
I'm just asking.
No, I'm saying that the, the engagement that we have with G P C O G is a, over a period of time, to coordinate with their efforts and collaborate with their efforts with a lot of communities in our region to create a climate action plan, which is going to be largely preparatory for our community to get ready for significant physical impacts from climate change.
Right.
Least of which is rising sea levels.
Okay, but, but we're already doing stuff like that that I think the money could be used for, like building paths we have going around town to let people not necessarily drive their cars around, but they can build, we're going to need money for that, right? 12 grand would go a long way towards that, you know, we're going to be building these paths from here down to the East Coast Greenway. I, I think there's a lot of things that we're doing that are going to be in that plan. I think the plan's going to be done, I, I just, I just don't think, I think we should be using that money for other things, that's all. And I get it's pass-through, and I get it's, you know, from the federal government to go to the green movement, but I still think, and we're working towards that, and I think that we can use that for other things, but I also think that we need to be saving money. And so that's, that's one thing I have an issue with. There's one other.
Mr. Curran, is public comment on any items you have that are on the agenda?
Not right now. We've had a lot of public comment on the budget, so.
This is out of particular motion?
Yeah, but it's not open for public comment, unfortunately. Council Fornier, I'm sorry.
For, refresh my memory, there was eight or nine communities involved, if my memory serves me right, it was quite a while ago when we talked about the plan.
This, this specific item was for contracted services for just Freeport, yeah?
Yeah, but I, if I, I thought during the discussion, they were, C O G is working with multiple communities, and what sold me on it was having multiple communities. Okay, that was, that was the discussion, but brings me back to my other point that if, if we're funding this for multiple communities to address climate change issues, I want to focus on the part-time sustainability coordinator, do we need to do both? I would argue, maybe along with what you're talking, Chip, I think we need to do some planning to affect possible issues coming down the road for climate change. But I, I'm not, I, I'm not here willing to support both. I'm, I want to do one, and I'm leaning harder towards this, and the reason I'm leaning harder towards this is that it is multiple communities that I think will have a bigger impact. If we're working from one plan and we're planning together, I think will have a tremendous impact. When we look at the two-point and two-and-a-half percent, I think we're kind of looking at the municipal budget going up, I tend to agree with you, Chip, but I know some people I've talked to are very concerned. I, I would like to see if we remove the part-time sustainability coordinator, you know, what effect that may have on saving a little bit money on the tax rate coming in, that's going to affect people on fixed incomes, and there, they're hurting. We are seeing increase, I, you know, we've got an increase in our fuel costs, we've got an increase in our paving costs, we have got tremendous increase, and they're going to be here next year, folks, and they're going to be here the year after. We got to start at some point, make some tough decisions, and so I, I.
So we got one motion on, right?
Yeah, but anyway, that's kind of my thought that I'm, on your motion, Chip, that, why I kind of supported that earlier on, thank you.
Council Philsbury?
Even tonight, we've spent considerable time talking about the town's ability to be prepared for development or prepared for these future initiatives, and I'm sorry if other people disagree with me, climate change is very real, and there's going to be a very real economic cost to our town, and the longer we delay planning activities or having support staff to be able to get grants and put initiatives into place, we are, we are doing ourselves a disservice. And I know money is tight for everybody, but this is, in my opinion, it's not, it's kind of a foolish initiative to try to squeeze out some, some dollars here and there. I mean, we've got real long-term challenges for this town due to climate change, and we need to start working toward them, and I'm completely supportive of having the halftime person as a starting place and for the G P C O G work.
My recollection is that the G P C O G climate plan that Chip referenced earlier was supported by funding that doesn't come from the town of Freeport, that we're only paying a fraction of the cost of the climate action plan, and that others, and I don't know if it was G P C O G or a grant that G P C O G had received, was paying for the bulk of the work. So it's kind of, we're getting a lot of bang for our buck on that. So, you know, for me, it's very important, and all that's changing tonight is just shifting what bucket of money we use to pay for it. So it's, it's definitely late in the game to be suggesting changes to our budget, not saying we can't do it, you know, this is our, it's our budget and we have to be comfortable with it. But that's, that's what I recall of the history for it. Council Bradley, and then back to Council Philsbury.
Yeah, I, I mean, to John's point, which I agree with, this is not coming out, this $12,000 is not coming out of the taxpayer, this is coming out of ARPA funds, which were granted to us basically by the federal government to address COVID kinds of impacts. So I, I don't see how this saves the taxpayer who is feeling the pinch any money at all unless you project future expenses that you would pay for out of this, but no one knows what they'll be. So that's a little imprecise for me, Chip, that's all. And then the second thing is, and this is personal, you know, I think climate change is existential. I really think we are facing an issue which is really, really hard to get our hands around, our minds around, our hearts around, our bodies around, but it's going to kill us or it's going to kill our kids. And it's really hard to start because you don't know what to do. I'm speaking for myself. I just don't know what to do. And here's, here's $12,000 that's going to help determine what to do. So it, for me, it's, it's the right kind of climate money to be spending now to help us decide what we're going to have to do later. So that's my pitch for it, and that's why I'll support it.
Council Philsbury, do you want to add comments?
I just wanted to ask a question, have we made any contractual obligations to G P C O G already?
No, it's always been understood that this is contingent, that's why it's next fiscal year. So the work wouldn't, they have not begun any work, they weren't planning to until after July 1 because they know that that money is not guaranteed until there's an approval of it, so. And also, I think the question was asked about what the financial impact, there would be, along lines of what Council Bradley said, the $12,000 that's paid for by ARPA funds would not have a direct tax impact, I can give you what that would be if you want to spend that money on something else. The $40,000 appropriation equates to about two cents on the tax rate or $6 if you own a $300,000 house. I'm going up a little bit in the value of what's considered median only because of the real estate prices recently, but, you know, so you own a 300, you know, that, that's proportional, so whatever your value is, if you own a $600,000 house, it would cost you 12 bucks.
So is it fair to say that for a median homeowner in Freeport, they'd be paying about 50 cents a month for us to hire a sustainability coordinator?
I think 300 to 350 is probably, yeah, yeah, in that, in that range, 50 cents to a dollar, yeah.
Are we addressing the sustainability coordinator right now?
Well, I think there was a discussion about, yeah, or at least, I don't know if there was a motion, but there was a question from Council Fornier, so I was just responding to his inquiry, that's all.
Right, but it's 50 cents today, and then next week or next month, we'll have Right, but it's 50 cents today, and then next week or next month, we'll have another thing that's, oh, it's only 50 cents. And then next week after that, it's, oh, it's a dollar. That's easy, but-
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor about the $12,000? So the motion on the floor is to remove the $12,000 from the ARPA funding. All in favor of removing the $12,000, right?
Aye.
All opposed? That's everybody. So it's one to six, motion fails. Any other discussion before we start tackling? There's four budget items. One is about revenues.
I-
All right, Counselor Fornier.
Back to my point, I would like to propose a motion that we do not fund a part-time sustainability coordinator. I think we're funding this. This is going to have a bigger impact. So I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Discussion on this one. Counselor Daniele?
I think the coordinator will actually allow us to collaborate more with our neighbors and have someone who can be the point person to talk to GP Cog and move what we find out forward. So I am supportive of leaving it in.
Counselor Bradley?
Question. My understanding, and maybe it's wrong, was that one of the reasons we wanted a sustainability coordinator was to identify sources of funding that wasn't tax-based, and that there's a lot of money out there in the world of climate change, and the federal government, the state government have a lot of money, and we just don't have someone who's got the time to address those grant opportunities, to save our taxpayer the money that we will ultimately decide to spend. So I support it.
I think that understanding is correct. Sorry. I think that understanding is correct, that the idea is the sustainability coordinator would be tasked with seeking out and applying for grants related to sustainability. Counselor Fornier?
So I'll answer your question. If this position passes and we find in six months that grants aren't coming in or whatever, would there be an appetite to get rid of it? And the answer, I think I know what it is, is going to be no, because I've never seen any positions in Freeport government, been around it for a little while, disappear.
I give you my two cents, which is that I don't think any position is sacrosanct and immune from being looked at. So, you know, if we find that this person is not effective and not doing a good job for the town, I wouldn't say, well, it's sorry, we hired you, we've got to keep you on anyway. It doesn't happen very often, but I'd certainly be willing to look at it if we're not getting what we need out of it. Maybe it's the wrong person in the job, maybe it's the wrong role.
I mean, we did outsource the general assistance administrator position, eliminate that, an $80,000 position, replace it with a $12,000 year expenditure, so.
As well as rescue billing, staff.
So I think I've axed like probably four or five full-time positions, but we've added them back in other places. I don't want to say that, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Not, I just, not above giving the ax every once in a while, but.
No, and I appreciate that, Peter.
Try to be judicious. Yeah, I mean, when the situation warrants it, if we can use the money elsewhere, I would support Dan's position as well. I do want to add, there are talks, and I don't want to put any certainty on this because I think we should assume that it will be tax-funded in the worst-case scenario, but we are examining, at the council's direction, we are examining grant opportunities to fund this position. There's a small chance it may not, the funding may not be expended, and we can use that money for something else. It's small. I know that Yarmouth is approaching it and has asked us to join in a grant application that we're kind of trying to feel out if that would be a good fit right now. So there's a possibility there. So I just don't want them to be surprised if we do find a grant for it. If we're able to do it, we don't need the money. If we come back and say, hey, we haven't spent it, just, I think that would be preferable to spending the money if we don't need to, but that's just, just so it's out there.
Counselor Lawrence?
Typically with these grants, isn't there a matching, matching part of these grants?
There's a couple different on the table that are being looked at, and one of them would not have a match, and it would be up to 50,000 per community, but that's not guaranteed.
Right, so out of the four, you're looking at, one is no match, and the other ones are match, so.
Yeah, there's some, some of them, yeah.
Okay, so it's, even though we get grants, we're spending more money, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, it wouldn't be free, but one of them may be free for the interim term, yeah.
Counselor Bradley?
Again, I don't want to give, I don't want to say that that's going to happen because it might not-
We're going to have a vote on this.
We have a motion pending about the sustainability coordinating. Any other discussion on removing the sustainability coordinator position? Okay, all in favor of removing the sustainability coordinator position from the budget?
Aye.
All opposed? Two to five, motion fails. Any other discussion before we start taking up budget items? Counselor Bradley?
Is this where we ask about certain items in the budget itself?
We can do that.
So I have to confess, I could not follow, and my fault, but I couldn't follow the discussion of state revenue sharing. Could you just sort of give me an overview of what the opportunity is, what we've decided we're going to budget on, and, you know, it seems to me like there's the possibility of getting like $900,000, and we've decided 400 is what we're going to budget for, and I'm not sure I'm right. So could you tell me what's going on?
Yeah, so let me just grab my other sheet so I grab the right number. Actually, I'm sorry. From a revenue sharing standpoint, we are budgeting $1,150,000, which is what the state's projection is for Freeport for FY '23.
That's the full 5%?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yep. Right, fingers crossed that that's how it comes out, but yeah.
I didn't know if we went the other way, that we had gotten conservative, hoping-
No, last year, we were a little conservative with it because it was still in the legislature and hadn't been decided upon. We had increased it, but not to the full amount, not knowing how it was going to fall out. But typically with state revenue sharing, most communities budget to what the state projects. The state puts out their projections and lists every community that receives revenue sharing, and that's typically what you budget to because they have a whole analysis of how they project what's going to be coming in and what gets allocated out based on the formula.
Based on so many different sources of income that they only, only they hold the accurate forecasting tools for. It's really impossible for us to, unless we want to go with a lower percentage than five, which has been something we've considered in the past.
Correct. But this is the full amount that they've recommended.
That's great, thanks. Counselor Fornier?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time of non-emergency transport budget. The question I have, I'm glad to see this in here, are we going to try to generate revenues through non-emergency transport?
Good question.
Can we?
I can tell you that from my perspective, it's in here like this because we've been working on getting it into a positive fund balance before we dissolve it and put it into fire rescue, which will be in the general operations of the town. There's minimal net runs, I believe, at this point. Chief, I'll allow Chief to speak to that wholly. I can tell you, the only thing that's currently budgeted are wage hours for staff when they, when they do that. And the reality of it is, at this point, we could move this full $74,000 as both a revenue and an expense in the general operation, you know, a general fund budget. But, you know, I'm trying to roll it out over time, so I know that we're moving things appropriately and that it's not an impact to the town. Because had we done it last year or the year before, the general fund would have had to absorb almost $300,000 loss from this program, so.
And can, and we can be clear that when you say eliminate it and move it to the general fund, if the net function continues at the same level it is today, or goes up or goes down, all that you're talking about is as an enterprise fund, taking that and absorbing that into general fund operations.
Correct.
So any revenue we generate from non-emergency transport would be credited as general fund revenue.
Versus enterprise.
Any expense would be a general fund payroll expense as opposed to having an enterprise fund.
Correct. It's just removing the designation-
That might be something, that might be something different than what Counselor Fornier is talking about, is can we generate more-
Yes, it's not eliminating the net program per se, or net runs per se. It's just eliminating it as a designated separate fund. It's eliminating the enterprise fund aspect and absorbing it as a fire rescue operation.
Which would have, which would have no effect on the ability to do net runs or make net revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm, so I, you know, I was concerned there was a move to eliminate the non-emergency transport, and I understand what you are talking. I would encourage the chief, and you've heard me say this before, I was at the hospital for a procedure, and the past president there actually came to me and asked us because they can't, can't find anyone to do the transports. So all I'm asking, not to put the chief on the spot, but as probably everyone knows, this was my pet peeve back when I was serving as chief here, and we did fairly well. So I know we have staffing issues and there's a whole bunch of other issues out there, but I'm glad to see us keep it, number one. And number two, I'm encouraging that if we can bring revenue in, let's look for some revenue.
And I'll just address, I know Paul and I don't, you don't feel like you need to speak, but if you want to chime in, if I get anything wrong, feel free. I know that we've had discussions about low-impact transports, I guess, that would be not draining to the department, like transporting all over the country, you know, all over New England, but are there local transports that we can do? And I know that there's going to be at least some analysis of that, right, talking with local providers.
Some of the work that we've done is, obviously you're aware, is that our staffing crisis not only affects Freeport, but it's affecting everybody else. The non-emergency transport services are having a hard time meeting those demands. We're trying to be a good neighbor to Midcoast Hospital, help them out when we can, and keep in mind our emergency response and availability for our community. So what we've been trying to do is bring people that are getting discharged from the ER and sometimes the upper floors, if they're Freeport residents, and bring them home. And then we charge them the non-emergent, non-emergent transport rate because that's a lower acuity as far as what we provide to the patient. So on a small scale, we're doing it. Can we do more? That's a sliding scale with the staffing models that we've got right now and staff available. Not opposed to it, but it's just trying to look out for our emergency needs, protect the community, and be a good neighbor to Midcoast and help them out. It's a challenge. My peer group, we've, you know, some that have done it, some transport work, and if those wheels aren't turning, we're not paying the bills. So, and that's that aspect in the world of non-emergency transport. So it isn't far from it, but to the, to the level that we were doing it back when you were chief, it's unsustainable today. So.
Thank you, Chief.
I've got a question for Jessica. I think it's an easy one. The, just to kind of make sure I have the high-level numbers right, with inflation around 8%, the initial budget that you had sent to us in consultation with the manager had a tax levy increase of about 4.25%, I think. And I think since then, we've made some adjustments and brought that down to around 3.3%. And that last number, I don't think is in the memo anywhere, so that's the one I'm asking to confirm if that sounds about right.
Across all taxing units, right?
Across all taxing units. Right, so including the school and the county and transit, our total tax increase for the town, I think, is around 3.3%.
That sounds about right.
Sounds about right, okay.
Yep. Looking for my, a lot of papers in here.
Yeah, any other questions while she's looking, that buys us some time? What I think we've got ahead of us, just to kind of set the stage of what comes next, is there's four items. One is about basically accepting state revenues, another one for accepting, approving the Winslow Park budget, a third for the non-emergency transport that we just discussed. And the fourth item is for basically all of the other budget items, which is a large item, a large item in our agenda, but it's basically our whole budget. And that's the culmination of all the work we've been doing since February or so. And we don't have to talk about budget for another six months or so.
And you are correct. It is 4.25% down to a 3.33%.
3.3, okay, thank you.
The only number that's changed in that has been the municipal levy portion that we've been messing around with.
That is correct. That is a direct reduction of the municipal tax.
Great, super. All right, are we ready for our budget approving marathon? Okay, so we are up to Counselor Egan, if you wouldn't mind reading the be it ordered for item 126-22 for state revenues.
Be it ordered that the following categories for state funds be accepted for fiscal year 2023: municipal revenue sharing, local road assistance, state aid to education, public library state aid per capita, civil emergency funds, snowmobile registration funds, tree growth reimbursement, veterans exemption reimbursement, business tax reimbursement, all other state funds not included in items 1 through 9 previously mentioned.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor of item 126-22?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seven to zero, motion carries. Thank you. On to item 127-22 regarding the Winslow Park budget, Counselor Pillsbury appropriately has this one to read.
Be it ordered that $397,960 be approved for the Winslow Park budget from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, and $23,000 be approved for the Harb Cottage budget from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor.
Can I second one?
Any discussion on this?
Can I second the next one?
Counselor Pillsbury, thank you for your service on the Winslow Park Commission. Any other discussion on the Winslow Park budget, which is neutral to the town finances because they have their own trust that they operate from? All in favor of item 127-22 for Winslow Park?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, motion carries. Item 128-22 regarding the non-emergency transport. Once again, appropriately, this is for Counselor Fornier.
Thank you. Be it ordered that the non-emergency transport budget in the amount of $74,021 be approved for fiscal year 2023.
Hacking.
I think it was loud enough that they captured him. Thank you, Counselor Bradley, for your second. Your enthusiastic second.
I'm so excited.
Any other discussion on the non-emergency transport budget? Being none, call for a vote. All in favor of item 128-22?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Counselor Lawrence, are you ready? This is the big one. I don't think you need to read the tables, but there is a-
Yeah, there's a lot of be it orders, and so on and so forth.
Anytime you get to a big box, you can just say, as printed in the agenda.
Yeah, I think it actually, yeah.
That's just in for agenda.
Take a deep breath.
Be it ordered, the following appropriations be made to several departments for purposes named, that the following revenues estimated be adopted and that the following amounts be raised by taxation, set action for fiscal year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023 municipal budget, as presented in the agenda. Be it further, be it further ordered that the following appropriations be made for the capital items projects listed below, and that the capital budget for fiscal year 2023 be adopted, as presented on the agenda, totaling $1,462,000. Be it further ordered that the following amounts be appropriated for the reserve funds to provide for items approved, as presented on the agenda, totaling $1,425,000. Be it further ordered that the following appropriations be made for its items and projects listed below, and that the destination Freeport Tiff budget for fiscal year 2023 be adopted, as presented below, totaling $210,000. Be it further ordered that the following appropriations from ARPA funding be made for the items and projects listed below, totaling $252,000.
Before a second is done, can I just make a note that the reserve amount should be $1,462, not $1,425? There's a spot missed on my updates. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Oh.
Chip, you read correctly, but the-
Yep. $1,000,000, you want me to read that one again? Yep.
And you'll see that the boxes both add up because of, that's precisely the $37,000 difference for the truck.
Yep.
It didn't get into the wording for the reserve fund above.
So should I read that one over again?
Yeah, you want to do just-
We covered it. It hasn't been a second, right? So just say, say you change your-
Yeah, change the event, change the be it further ordered for the police, all the reserves, that the following amounts be appropriated from the reserve funds to provide for items approved, as presented on the agenda, totaling $1,462,000.
Perfect.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you. Now, is there a second for Counselor Lawrence's motion? Thank you, Counselor Daniele. Missed your opportunity.
Missed your opportunity. All right, so any final, and this is really final discussion for our budget for the following year. Counselor Fornier?
Just for procedure, it used to be everything was separated. So as an example, when I go through here, I probably would vote against the operating budget, but would support the capital budget. But it looks like it's an all or nothing that I have to do here. So I will have to vote in the negative because of my one concern I have on one part of that. So maybe in the future, we could do operating capital, so on and so forth, and address each one. So if in fact, one person has an issue, it could be discussed.
Yeah, I mean...
Is that feasible to do, or are they interrelated?
It's really just adding other, separating them out as other business items. I'm looking behind Darrell at the town clerk, right, if we wanted to... No, it's okay, it's okay, Darrell. If we wanted to do these, the BEAT ordered as separate orders with different item numbers, it's just putting them under another heading. There's no accounting purpose why they all have to be together. The other, the flip side to that, though, is that maybe it does some good by, if there's... I mean, let's say that there's, you've got one item that you're opposed to, right, that you would vote no on the operating budget. But if there were three other items that different people were opposed to, the operating budget wouldn't pass unless one or two or three of them were addressed. So it kind of is, it's worded as a consensus item. We don't usually have non-consensus, but that's actually the political norm, not something we should expect, is for somebody, Darrell to be opposed to one thing, Chip to be opposed to one thing, and Dan to be opposed to another thing, and then all it takes is for John to not like something, and for four different reasons, you don't have a consensus to adopt the budget. So I kind of like in the fact that it makes it more difficult and would make us address those things, but we could do it. That's really, I think, whoever the council chair is, if that's Dan and John, the chair and vice chair next year, whoever it is when we make the agenda, we can go over it with them, just, we'll run that feedback. And Chris and Jessica, can you put a mental note on that? When we make this agenda next year, we'll run it by the council chair and vice chair to see if they want us to separate them out, does that make sense?
Got a note.
Yep, yeah, I'm not opposed to that, I think it's a good idea, Darrell. And just from my perspective in the past, I've had issues with individual line items that I voted for or against. But then as the total budget or whatever portion of it we were dealing with came up, I would, for me, I would be okay accepting the full budget, knowing that I opposed an individual item in it.
I think we might have to change the timing, too, because we wouldn't want to be having a budget that doesn't pass eight days before the fiscal year starts.
No, but I mean, you would have to address the, I'm thinking you would have to address the items that night, like, you'd have to... I mean, you get...
Have to pass something, yeah.
You get some horse trading going on at the last minute. Well, I'll vote no when you're this, if you vote, I mean, it gets to be a little parliamentary, but...
I will agree with John, and this is a little later in the process than we normally do. Usually it's the first meeting in June that everything gets adopted, just in case there are issues and concerns, there is another meeting. It just happens to be the way the schedule fell this year, so...
Yeah, we've got plenty of...
But I'll make a note to try to make that.
And I mean, if there was an issue tonight with this, you've got...
One more Tuesday.
One, two, three, four, five.
We don't even have a second on this motion.
You have seven more, there are seven more weeknights here that you could call emergency meetings on if we had a budgetary crisis. And our budget passes, if you do nothing and can't resolve a budgetary crisis and having seven emergency meetings for the next seven nights, the budget, the default is what is proposed by me, goes through anyways. So we have a no-fail, no-default budget provision in our charter. So it's not the end of the world, so we've never dealt with those type of scenarios, but there's plenty of space in the process if we needed to.
Any other last-minute comments?
No, I would just like to say, Jessica, thank you for all your hard work on this, it's been great. You too, Peter, and the whole administration, it's been, you know, it's always an arduous process.
I love it.
Feeling with seven people that have to have different opinions.
She actually gets excited by doing the annual budget, she's like in her zone for the past six months.
I hope so, but still.
As we all are, Jessica.
Starting tomorrow is like depression week for her, like, no budget for six months, so...
Thank you for mentioning that, I was going to offer similar comments after it all passes, just to congratulate him on a successful budget, but we'll see how it goes. So, has there already been a second? All right, I'll call for a vote on the budget item 129-22, all in favor of passing the budget.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Five to two motion carries. All right, thank you, Jessica, and thank you, Peter, and thanks to all the staff for a successful budget and all the work that went into it. And thank you as well to the council. I know we've had a lot of Tuesdays together to get to where we are. So I appreciate the work that everyone's been putting in for that and still remaining cordial.
But now we get to spend it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Item number 130-22, we get to spend the budget.
We start spending the budget, yep, pretty quickly. Three items of expense now, four items of expense. First one, item 130-22, I believe we are up to Counselor Daniele.
BEAT ordered that the bid for 70 SCBA bottles be awarded to Industrial Protection Services in the amount of $67,408.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
You are dogged.
The only discussion I have is our bottles are going out of code, and Paul asked to be on the first agenda after it's appointed, so we can get him in place before the end of the calendar year, correct, Paul?
Yeah, this whole getting it here tonight is just trying to get ahead of the potential supply chain issues on that. Right now, we're looking at about 12 weeks out for delivery, but that could change relatively quick on us. So action tonight just helps us get us into the seat and into the queue and get those here sooner than later, so...
Makes sense, that's the same for both, I imagine. There's two items on our agenda, one for the bottles, the other for the fill station.
Same situation.
Same situation for both, I imagine. All right, any discussion, questions?
Is this a good price?
Yes, I mean, honestly, I mean, with what we've sent out for bid, and those that chose and those that did were comfortable with it.
Counselor Pillsbury?
Didn't these come in under bid, I mean, under what was budgeted?
I don't remember.
Let's go back to the previous item, hold on.
They did. Chief? Okay, there you go.
Yes.
I have some ideas how to spend it.
Yes, the bottle replacement was budgeted at 70... The bottle replacement was at 77,000 was the estimate, and it came in at 67,408, and the estimate for the fill station was 60,000 and...
Came in at 40,000, oh, one, two.
Oh, we saved $30,000.
That's not installed, though, there's still costs.
Okay.
I wouldn't leave a budget item that overstated for you.
Understood.
Any other questions, comments? So we're on the bottles, item 130-22, all in favor of accepting the bid or awarding the bid?
Aye.
Seven, and none opposed, seven to zero. And item 131-22, Counselor Bradley, would you read the BEAT order?
BEAT ordered that the bid be awarded to Industrial Protection Services in the amount of $40,012.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Fornier, similar item, any discussion, questions, Counselor Fornier?
Chief, we bought the last compressor from IPS. They did not support the current compressor, have they fixed their problem?
It's not IPS, it was Scott, got out of the line, and so the parts became issues in trying to do that repair work, and it's just, you know, piecemeal it and trying to work. So the decision was made, we need to replace it. I can tell you, it's the new compressor that is Bauer, Bauer's a well name, they're American-made, they've been in business 75 years. We've got 12 towns around this county that have it, so we're comfortable with IPS being in servicing it.
Thank you, Chief.
Was Scott is in the Ayrpack Company, the same company? Scott Composites?
IPS is the dealer for Scott.
But the previous compressor was Scott, you're saying?
Scott, and all of a sudden, they just chose to stop production and get out of the market and left us hanging.
Counselor Fornier?
I do think Bauer is the way to go, that's a great compressor, thank you, Chief.
All right, any further discussion? Call for a vote on item 131-22 for the fill station, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chief, for your support and all you do for the town, and to the rest of your staff as well.
Thank you.
Item 132-22 is our Public Works lift replacement. Counselor Egan, would you read this BEAT ordered?
BEAT ordered that the bid be awarded to Vehicle Service Group of Windham, Maine in the amount of $84,373.14.
Second.
I give Counselor Lawrence, any questions or comments or... Counselor Fornier?
I went down, looked at the lift, you certainly needed a new one, but I think the cool thing on this, if I remember right, this particular system you're getting will go onto each individual wheels, which will allow a lot more access, and you can move it around the garage, is that correct?
Correct, it will, Mr. Fornier. It also allows us to free up some space on the other side where the lift is now. We take that out, so you can move these anywhere in the shop that you need to. Another important thing I think needs to be mentioned is this lift gives us the capability of picking up a fire truck. We did not have that capability before. It overloaded our lift, this will actually pick fire truck up off the ground.
Thank you.
And this one also came in under budget by about $15,500. Good track record, any other questions?
Glove while you can, Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, please remember that number.
No doubt you'll be spending it in other places.
Next item. In 30 seconds.
Oh, there we go, yeah. All right, call for a vote on item 132-22 for the lift replacement, all in favor of awarding the bid?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, thank you. So, item 132-22, we're up to Counselor Pillsbury, would you read the BEAT ordered?
BEAT ordered that the bid be awarded to HP Fairfield in the amount of $226,880 for a new Public Works plow truck and plow equipment.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Fornier. This one came in over budget by almost $37,000. Any questions, comments from council on this one?
Can I share some information, please?
Absolutely.
Because this is eating on me. I don't like having this, what I proposed as a budget in this week come into, but we're talking about post-COVID, and I feel a little bit better because I was in a meeting with GP Gog last week with some directors from all over the state. They're in far worse shape than we are. Some of these communities, when they bid on, nobody foreseen this much of an expense being in one year. AT Fairfield, as I said in my memo, took the initiative and bought trucks. And per your decision, in about 15 seconds, I'll notify them of a commitment letter because the price expires at the end of tomorrow afternoon. Also on the lift, the reason that I'm bringing this to you tonight is if I don't sign a commitment letter in the morning, at the end of this month, they're going to have a price increase. So it's not without looking at some real hard numbers I come to you with this, because I'm struggling with this, but unfortunately, it is where we at in today's society.
Paul, do you want to talk just really briefly about the alternatives? We did talk about possibly rehabbing your existing outgoing truck, and you were looking at a potential two-to-maybe-longer-year life that we'd require out of the existing truck if we didn't take this bid to get the vehicle this year, right?
Correct, yes.
So we did look at some alternatives, and the alternate bid, which is also over budget as well, I believe, correct? The alternate bid to this is for potential two-year delivery on a vehicle, which was still above $190,000. So did the math real quick and realized $20,000 to $60,000 for rehab on the vehicle that we have now to keep it running for two years would not equal the same amount of amortized value as buying the new truck now for an extra $37,000, so...
Counselor Fornier?
I can see next year savings coming, because when next time a truck comes up, we're going to be able to reuse the dump body, is that correct?
We are, that is, as me and you talked earlier. I'm actually hoping to also increase the life of the truck, not just the bed, because the bed is what gives us the most problems. Of course, the engine and stuff, it starts aging. Yes, I'm actually hoping to be able to extend that out quite a bit.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add, what Mr. Johnson was just talking about, if we went with the alternate, I'll maybe give you some good news. We, y'all, allowed me to purchase a sweeper last year, we still don't have that sweeper. The good news is, we're using their sweeper and putting wear and tear on it that we're not putting on our brand-new, and it's not here yet. My reason for bringing that up, when we opened the bids, the truck dealers, every one of them looked at me and said, "You're looking at two to three years out if you order a truck." And that's when it really started sinking in, it's like, ooh, wait a minute. And, you know, AT Fairfield come up with this idea. I have been promised that if I sign a commitment letter, I will have a plow truck by the end of September this year.
Crazy market, Counselor Fornier?
And back to my pet peeve, is why I support to have a good capital budget, so when situations like this come up, we can strike while the iron's hot. Just my pet peeve that everyone in the council knows I have, thank you.
You're here, you're here.
I want to be, because I had a counselor ask me this several years ago. I'm signing a commitment letter, I'm not purchasing it after the budget year takes effect, so it's just a commitment letter.
Right, this is coming out of our next-year budget, right?
We got two more weeks until we can start writing checks, so...
Correct.
Yeah, right. All right, if there's no other discussion, let's vote on item 133-22 for a new plow truck, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Mr. Gibson, thank you, your staff as well. Last action item on our agenda before we get to our stretch codes item is a change for the police benefits, which I'll let Mr. Manager explain. We have 10 minutes allocated for this.
I'll go quicker, this is, only affects a few employees, these are non-union employees. It's a small dollar item, it's about $7,000 aggregate for all of the people involved. What it does, we moved, as part of our year-ago union negotiations, we all agreed, as one of the only, one of two municipalities in our comparative region of 16 that we use, we were one of two that offered a lower retirement plan for police employees. It was, I'll use the common names, or 2C and 3C, it's the plan as it's referred to by the main PERS system. We were one of the very few, not just in our comparable group, but also regionally, that were offering 2C. We agreed to move to 3C. That is an increased contribution, not just from the town, but from the employee as well. And what it does is it offers a larger calculation at the end of retirement for what your annual pension would be. And it does that by obviously forced savings over your entire career going into the system. It's not magic, but it is essentially, the contribution levels go up by about 2% approximately from both the employer and the employee. And that was for about 11 or 12 employees for our union that we did that. We did not do it for non-union employees, and those include supervisors, but also the harbor master, sergeants, lieutenant, and chief. To be in this plan, you have to be a licensed law enforcement, a certified law enforcement officer. It's only offered to that group, so it cannot apply to civilian employees. One thing that was brought up in meetings, regular meetings that I have with the supervisors group, specifically by a couple of our sergeants, were they're kind of the next step. So when they get promoted, there are several items that the benefits are different. And this is one of them, but two of them go down, namely health insurance and retirement, just because there are plans that were offered, the new plans that were offered to rank-and-file employees that we haven't carried over. And so they made a very good point to me, which I reluctantly agreed to, is that this is a disincentive for somebody to take a promotion when you, between the health insurance cost and the retirement cost, it adds up to about half the raise you get, and you have all the additional responsibilities of being a supervisor on top of it. So, as I said reluctantly, their argument made a lot of sense when I sat down and looked at it, and, you know, they did some, you know, calculations like, hey, I could work X number of hours at my old rate, doing my old job, and end up better off financially, you know, if I worked four more hours a week of overtime, I'd end up better off financially than I am now. Is that really, what's the incentive there? And they're right, so this is small, but it's an incentive step, I think. And their concern wasn't for them, it was more for, you know, forecasting five or 10 years in the future when we're looking for the next person to be promoted. There's, it would be a disincentive. And the reason it's even more of a disincentive when you're promoted is because you get your final compensation in the main PERS system is calculated on all of your years of service, and you get the credit based on how long you've been in each of those plans. So if you start in the higher plan, and then you do 10 years there, and then you do 10 years in the lower plan, it would be the difference, but it would be the average between the two. So it's the entire time they're working as a supervisor, they would be getting a lower... lower compensation. So, doesn't make a difference to the people that put in fifteen years already in the two-C plan and are now in the two-C plan, but moving forward, if you've been in the three-C plan for five or ten years, you'd really have to think hard about whether you take the step down, because your, all your retirement calculations would change by sixteen percent roughly. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
It's an equity thing, I think, but it requires, it's within the amount that I could sign off on, but it requires a resolution by the governing body to actually move them for main purse.
So, along those lines, Counsel Fornier, would you like to read the be it ordered for one thirty-four dash twenty-two?
Yes. Be it ordered that the Town of Freeport agrees to provide a special plan, three C, to its permanent full-time, non-FPBA police officers who work twenty or more hours per week, fifty-two weeks per year, for special render after June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Service for non-FPBA police officers rendered before July first, twenty-twenty-two remains under special plan two C. Continue to provide special plan three C for its permanent, full-time FPBA police officers who work twenty or more hours per week, fifty-two weeks per year. Continue to provide special plan two C for all non-permanent, full-time employees who work twenty or more hours per week, fifty-two weeks per year. Continue to exclude all other employees who are not permanent, full-time employees, i.e., who work less than twenty hours per week and are less than fifty-two weeks per year, and its elected officers from participating in the plan. To authorize Peter Joseph, Town Manager, to sign the amended agreement between the Town of Freeport and the main public employees retirement system.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lawrence. Any other, or any discussion or questions for the manager? Counsel Egan?
I think we absolutely should be doing this. My experience in interacting with, through the chiefs, with members of the department during my six years on the council has been to find that those members are dedicated, members of our force. And my entire time on the council, hiring issues have been a prime concern of the manager and the chief in trying to find good people. And these days, even harder to find somebody who wants to go into law enforcement. So, I think we have a great group on our force, and I think these are excellent, small steps that we can do to provide equity among the staff and do what we can to enhance and retain our current staff and maybe attract some new folks as well when we have openings. Actually, we have an opening now that we can't fill. So, I'm strongly in favor of this and really appreciate the way it was presented and the reasoning behind it and the equity that's behind this.
I agree. Yeah. Any other comments? All right. Let's call for a vote for one thirty-four dash twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. With a hearty thanks to all in our police department.
Pretty good group right now. We'd like to keep them.
Yes, and promote them as needed, yeah.
We would like to, yep.
That concludes the action item on our agenda, and we're on to other business, where we get to discuss stretch codes and building codes. And that is the only remaining item on our agenda. So, Counsel Egan, would you care to introduce where we are?
Sure.
What's going on?
The purpose of having this on our agenda this evening is to just have an initial conversation, A, about what stretch codes are, B, why we're even talking about it, and C, to see if there's a plan where we could get something in place to actually have a formal adoption of such. I was approached, actually, from numerous constituencies, not the least of which is Freeport Climate Action Now, members that are sitting here in front of us this evening, as well as from a number of building trades folks and folks that are invested in promoting sustainable construction methods in the state of Maine, and as well as other folks that are participating in code compliance and adoption at the state level, code officers who work with the state agency that adopts these, to encourage us to consider looking at a stretch code, which is essentially an enhancement on certain elements of the building code that relate to energy efficiency and sustainability within the building practices. There's lots of evidence to show that a better-built building, more efficient-built building is more comfortable, uses a lot less energy over the long haul. We don't have the luxury of having a very new built environment in Maine. We have a very old built environment in Maine, so a lot of what we may be applying for stretch codes might be in rehabs or renovations where it's a lot harder to get those things accomplished. That said, there's a lot of enthusiasm to try and set these parameters for encouraging our building trades and our customers in our town that are developing properties to go to these stretch codes and make more energy-efficient, higher sustainability buildings. The other side of that is that it can cost more money, and there are already, as we well know, an array of codes and building trade requirements in order to get a building permit. And if you don't have a design professional that is versed in how to take the code and apply it to your particular building application, a small contractor can be left sort of head spinning when they come in to get a permit, and somebody who's extremely knowledgeable, like our code officer, Nick Adams, says, "Yeah, but you didn't see page three of this and page four of that," or whatever it is. And I don't know anybody that is as encyclopedic about the code as Nick. He is top-notch in understanding this. So, I thought about both sides of this and bringing it forward and asked Nick and Caroline to talk about it and to come back to the council with a couple of ideas for maybe some conversations. And they're in the process of doing that. They have a few things going on right now. But I think in general, the feedback I've gotten from informal discussions with Nick and one with Caroline is that the code that's in, as we heard earlier, in the 2021 MUBEC Uniform Building and Energy Code for Maine, contains language in this. And we can take a look at how much of that, if maybe potentially all of it, we want to adopt. But I don't think that we, as a group up here, are in any kind of a position to make a blanket statement to say, yes, we're going to adopt this without really a thorough understanding and a dialogue from our staff who deal with it on a daily basis. The last thing I want to do is create something that is going to be more problematic for projects being built in our community. However, I think with a good explanation and a good presentation to the public about how these codes can improve your building, I think we could have a good dialogue with everybody that comes in for a building permit. So, tonight's item is to just introduce this as an idea. I'm really happy that we have some members of Freeport Climate Action Now to talk about their particular reason. They're much more knowledgeable about what's in the 2021 code than I am, but to just also lay out what the expectations are, that we're just starting this conversation. And I really hope we get to have a chance to talk with Nick and Caroline at another workshop style or other business topic before we have an official item in front of us, because if anybody else up here has read the 2021 MUBEC code and has it inside and out, I will stop right now.
You too.
And listen. And it's an extensive list, and there's no doubt that we need to be doing that, and we need to be encouraging our building trades to come along with that. I am in firm agreement that climate change is existential and is enormously important, and we need to be focusing on it. But I think we have to work on both sides with communication about how we implement that, so.
Counsel Fornier?
One question we had when we had our workshop earlier. I was interested to see what the cost per square foot would be for a residential home, single-family residential home, and ultimately multiple families. I served on the ICC Building Code Representative in New England for ten years, so that was a wonderful experience for me, you know, working on the codes. And I want to research this. I'm not sure, I'm not, you know, see where it takes us and see some options we can, because, yeah, I'm thoroughly agreement there's a lot of opportunities. As, you know, when I built my home back in seventy-three, we were only required to have eight inches of insulation in the attic. Well, guess what? That weren't quite enough. And kind of figuring out, after I had the ice jams and some problems through the winter, when I, you know, increased that to thirty inches, not only did I see a substantial savings in that, but no damage to the roof and so on and so forth. So, there's a lot of pluses to that. But I also want to see what the cost is going to be, because I have people coming in. My son is in the trades, and it's amazing where people are trying to build, and it's really difficult. We are facing affordable housing, so we got to balance here that we want to have affordable housing, but yet, we want to try to get the most efficient and keep it within people's budget. So, it's going to be a very interesting discussion. I'm glad we're having it, and, you know, I look forward to it. Thank you.
I agree. Yeah, Counsel Daniele.
One thing we talked about with the Sustainability Advisory Group is, you know, if Freeport's going to consider it, it'd be really nice if the areas around us would consider it too, so broadening this conversation to seeing what the appetite is. So, it's not just, oh, a builder's going to say, oh, Freeport's hard. It's, oh, the whole community decided to do it, so the community's decided it's a good idea. So, I hope that we can go forward with that.
Counsel Bradley?
Has anybody thought about asking FEDC what it thinks about this, since they seem to have hats and all rings?
I haven't heard of that discussion happening, but I'm happy to ask them.
I had an informal conversation with Brad about it.
Okay, so they're aware?
At least on their radar, yeah.
Okay, that's all that occurs.
Mr. Stevenson, I know you've been waiting patiently to talk about this. Thank you for sticking around, and I'd like to invite you up to offer any comments. And anyone else in the public who wants to chat as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Counselor Egan, for putting this on the agenda. And many of the sentiments and thoughts and facts that you presented, I can't do any better than you did. I can tell you how we happened to get involved in it. We formed this group, are concerned about climate change, fossil fuels, the planet, and we looked around. We saw all the building that was taking place in Freeport right about now. Medellobean, one-hundred-and-forty-five units out on Desert Road. The downtown vision plan, you know, contemplates building. We want building. We want them to be good buildings. We want them to last. We want buildings that will attract people and keep people in homes at expenses that they can pay. So, we look, you know, what's happening on the codes? So, we find out that what we have here in Freeport is 2015. And then we find out that we were sort of learning. We don't know much about this, but the latest version is the so-called stretch code, the 2021. And so, if the Department of Energy determines that that code makes significant improvements in energy efficiency, you probably all know this, Daryl, the state basically has to take a look at the codes. And then, within two years, and then the state has to certify that it's looked at, the residential codes in this case, but there really isn't any, it doesn't have to happen immediately. The 2015 was just mandated in 2021. So, here we are. We're thinking, people are saying, wait, you know, the state's going to change things. Maybe yes, maybe no. New governor? Who's on the board then? What happens? We don't know. All we know is that a lot is happening now. It's going to affect our future, and we've got a chance with a council that's really concerned and has put a lot into this town over the last couple of years. I haven't sat in this audience for a number of years, and I'm just so impressed about what's happened up here. So, thank you very much for that. But, so, we had this idea. We thought, well, let's find out what people think about it. So, I talked to clerk. We were able to get permission to have a table outside the polling booth. We had hundreds of people stop and get information from us. We had over one-hundred-and-sixty people sign letters to you. More, actually, are coming in all the time, saying, please look at this. Please do this. And so, I'm thinking, what else can we say here tonight? You've heard from Lance about it, because there's been a lot of concern expressed, the future. And so, I said, okay, what do we do? Why don't we just take from the letters that are addressed to you, some comments that struck us? You'll see the letters. We'll present them tonight. And being a retired attorney and having nothing else to do, I decided to take my hand in trying to draft an ordinance that would enact the code. Now, I'm sure your attorney will look at it and say, it's a good thing he retired, but it's something to start with, anyway. But the comments and the letters from your voters, here we go, just for a few. All right. Okay. "I want our climate to be safe for our children and grandchildren." That came across so many times. How about this one? "We need energy solutions now. We are effed if we don't." "I love my grandchildren. Climate change will have a major impact on Freeport's natural resources and economy, too, if we don't act." How about this one? "I'd like lobsters to be able to live in the main gulf, but the water needs to stay cold. Any measure we can take to mitigate the effects of climate change should be a top priority, and I hope it becomes a top priority." "It's an investment with immediate and lasting returns." You've heard that already. It needs to be done. It makes sense. It will help retrofit old homes. We're running out of time to save our planet. Another one. "I want my kids and grandkids and beyond to survive." And from one of those kids, listen to this one. "Because I am twenty years old and climate destruction will kill my future." One last quote. "We should try to control what we can, and local is the place to begin." Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, thank you.
And the letters.
Anybody else want to come up and speak about this?
Somebody?
Just asking, does anybody else that wants to come up? Mr. Osnol?
I want to deliver these first by name, Chairman.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. Is this one for ever? This is all for us? Okay.
It's all of them.
Oh, I see. This is all of them. Okay.
More coming in, and we'll bring them in and deliver them to you when they arrive.
Awesome.
And my draft.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you again, Bob.
Mr. Osnol?
Yes, Andrew Osnol, Freeport. My one concern is, not that, you know, things aren't changing, and if we can insulate our houses a little better, it's always a great thing. My concern is that we come up with a code so complicated. I've always believed the applicant should be able to understand from the code what he needs to do to comply, not to make it so complicated or unavailable that he cannot read the code and understand what he needs to comply with before he goes to see Nick. The applicant, the landowner, the builder should be able to figure it out before he approaches the code guy, whoever that may be. So, my concern is, all these codes are wonderful, and you shouldn't have to hire an engineer or somebody to figure out how to build your own house or build something else. So, all these codes are great, and I'm not against them, because I haven't read them yet. But my one concern is that we end up relying on experts when, because we have written a code so complicated or the calculations are so complicated that the average guy can't figure it out that's built something. So, when you go through this process and you're drafting legislation, you're adopting legislation, I think it's paramount that, and I think it's, it used to be, basically, average statement that the applicant has to be able to understand what he needs to do to comply before he gets there, because if he can't, he's at the whim of a bureaucrat, whether it's a Freeport bureaucrat or any bureaucrat. And he shouldn't have to be at the whim of somebody. So, once again, this is working towards, if we make it easy to understand, we can be a business-friendly community, and we can be a building-friendly community. And we want people to come and understand what they have to do to get through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osnol. Anybody else want to come up to podium?
Just a couple of comments. I staffed the table on about two or three hours on the polls. During that time, I talked to two builders, young builders, but experienced builders, who were eager to sign. And I also know from having been in the industry for thirty years, that there are other builders here in Freeport who endorse this. here in Freeport who endorse this. Daryl can speak better than I to the fact that the IECC codes, as with all the international codes, are developed with all the stakeholders present. And, and in my experience, and we were dealing in, in those days with, well, Boca 74 here, Boca 85 here, you know, they, they could be understood and they didn't need me to understand them.
Thank you. Counselor Bradley?
This is a positive question. This could be heard several ways. So you guys, Freeport Can, are going through options, ways in which the town of Freeport and residents of the town of Freeport can make some sense out of climate change and actually do things that make a difference. And I, I, as I said earlier, don't know what to do, but I'm concerned and, and looking to people who are spending the time to sort through the, the options to make recommendations like this one. Is there some, something you could say about why this is a priority? In other words, as opposed to the 78 million other things that, that are on everybody's possible table? Is it because this is something that can happen right away? It gives us a reputation as a community? It's, it creates such an impact? I just don't know how I would explain to someone who is a denier that this was a good one to do now.
Codes are minimum standards, just, to start with. And, and it's one of the things, I will say Cumberland, the, the council has already approved their climate action plan, which includes adopting this, this code. It's, the state constrains us with codes. We've got two choices. One's mandated for a community our size. The other one is an option to go a little, a step further. As I mentioned before, this, in terms of where we've got to get to, this is a small step, but it's a step in the right direction. And there have been precious few of those actually taken as opposed to talked about for the last 30 years that I've been following this. And that's true of local governments, state governments, national governments and international organizations. Lots of talk. This is something that is allowable. It can be done. It can be done now and the next 140 unit housing project that comes to Freeport will be built to a better standard and save 10 to 15% energy.
So it's, the, the emphasis is on, from a climate perspective, is on the energy savings and that it's, it's sort of project ready. It's just not something we have to debate about. It's, it's there, in place and ready to adopt. It's, it's something we can do quickly.
It is a step that can be taken now and presumably as things, they get worse and people get more serious, there will be other steps.
Sure, I understand.
Counselor Fournier?
One thing I think that would be interesting if, if we look at this is maybe some incentives where if you want to admit this extra code, similar like heat pumps, now we can go and, and get incentives to put heat pumps in to efficiency Maine. To me, this could be huge in going that. Maybe that's what we should have as a discussion. If we have a very efficient building home in here, maybe we get a little bit off your permit as you come through the door. You know what? That might be a win-win because you can sell that to someone that's on a tight budget that's, hey, we're going to save a little money if you add a little insulation here. Or you meet these energy codes and you're going to save on your energy costs down the road. So maybe marketing and, and giving some incentives may be a plus for that.
Yeah, you could also take a little bit off of their property tax too. Because it's an ongoing thing.
Yeah. I would suggest that might be a great project for our new sustainability coordinator to say, hey, see if you can help us find some, some ways to incentivize people to, to build better than they absolutely need to. And maybe there's some grant money we can leverage to do that, to say, you know, well, we'll support a fund, that's a grant fund and where we, we give out money to, to folks who adopt extra building codes. Some questions I had for, for Nick and things, I don't expect the answers tonight, but maybe just help seed the discussion for next time is, do we have the option of applying this to commercial buildings or residential buildings of a certain size? So if you're coming to build 140 unit building, yeah, you should absolutely be doing this. But if you're building a, you know, a retirement home for your, your mother-in-law, do you still have to do it? Or is there a phased approach where we do one before the other? And then what's the opinion of the builders in general? Are they all, you know, could they, do they all, do they have the sophistication to be able to build to this standard? If it's more insulation, I assume that's pretty easy. If it's mechanical ventilation, I imagine that's pretty routine and they can do that. But are there things in there that we say, I can do this, this and this, but I just don't know how to do that yet? And then lastly, if, how much of this would apply to renovations? If I'm adding a, a room, a wing onto my house, building a garage, do I, would I need to apply that standard to the new part of the house, to just the parts of the old house that I'm changing? I don't need to redo everything in the old house? So, so things like that. And then again, we don't need to dive in tonight, but they're the kinds of things that are swimming around in my head. In general, I think it's a good idea. I just want to be careful about how to.
And the parts you tear into the walls on renovate for the first question, for the last question. The second to last one, I do know that I've had conversations with him. He, he's not against tighter codes. His concern is exactly what you stated, I think, is sophistication, is that nothing happens in a vacuum when you're doing building construction, building sciences. When you seal a house tighter, you've got to know about five other things that you have to deal with when you seal that house tighter. And his experience, I know, has been with, not that it's a bad idea, but that you don't learn how to properly ventilate, moisture control, things like that. So people build unhealthy houses as a result that five years later have black mold and water damage and things like that. It doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, but it means that you can't just tell somebody who doesn't understand the other five parts of this connected equation to do part A, increase it by 500 times and not know that you have to decrease B by 20 and increase C by three and things like that. I mean, it's, it's a multi-part system. So the, the science behind it, there's a lot of builders that do understand it and do it really well. And bigger builders that work with HVAC regularly, things like that are going to know it like the back of their hand. It's no big deal. But somebody who's, to get to Mr. Arsenal's point, somebody who, you know, how, if you're the builder that's trying to understand it for yourself and you don't, you're being told to do this and you don't understand what that does over here, that's when it creates problems. So it's not opposition to the codes, but he can say, he can give you more detail and all that, I think. But his concerns are legitimate just in things that he's seen.
Yep.
You know, it's not shoddy work, it's just not understanding how all the parts work together. Right.
I think it's a good idea for us, maybe we just check in here, that we, through the manager, give some direction to Nick Adams, our code officer, and just get his feedback at a meeting here in the near future so that we can start this process.
Yeah.
Does that sound good? Am I right with that?
How about the code officer and I would like to open it up to some builders?
Yeah.
You know, let's, let's bring in a, a builder of a, of a residential home and let's bring in some major contract builders. I'd like to pick their brains.
Yeah. Sounds like a good plan.
Try and line that up for something July and August.
Yeah.
What is the timeframe that you guys have in mind or have been thinking about as a reasonable timeframe for the town to work through this and adopt it?
Could you, could you stand at the podium? I'm getting old.
I'm alive.
Would you mind standing at the podium just so that the folks on TV can hear you? Thank you.
You've got a lot going on, all right? You've just been through a lot. But the sooner the better. Time's running. What? The end of the year would be wonderful.
This council year?
Yes.
Not, not this next month, not this summer?
No, but get started on it. So we can maybe have it be in effect for the, for the next calendar year would be wonderful. But there'd be time for people to look at it. You could look at things that were already on, on the board, plans that have been in. There's already a provision written in that it doesn't affect things that have reached a certain stage of the development. So, and it, it'll say, this is what it would cover. You're going to have hopefully a sustainability coordinator. You've got your, your own Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board. This is a top priority of theirs. They aren't here with us tonight just because they thought, we can't go to the council with this before it deals with the budget and other things that are on, on its plate. But they're going to be here, they're your advisors, fast, we hope. That it's getting, it's getting hotter.
Thank you again. There's no other business. Counselor Fournier?
One thing I'd like to see, and I'm asking Peter if he can do this, we get tax bills coming out in the fall. We just have an increase that's going to affect some of our residents significantly. Can we put something in those bills that explains how they can get on to the tax program for people 65 or older? So that to me would be kind of a helpline, saying, folks, the state has a program, here's how you can do it, because it has to be done by December. Can we add that?
It's been expanded too. There's a lot more resources available.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'm eligible.
Pretty sure you're not eligible.
Well, then maybe you're eligible.
Is that possible to do in the?
It is.
Form?
Across a certain threshold, you get relief.
We'll look at it. It, it would, yeah, I mean, we would definitely do a mailing. That's not a problem. The question is, the new program that was just adopted, if they're going to have state standards by the time we issue tax bills or not? There's a lot, so there's two. There's a deferral program and there's a freeze type of program that, that's the new one that, I'm using not a very imprecise term, tax freeze, but your rate lock, your, your, right, your payment gets locked at the rate that it's at. That one has a lot of work to get done at the state and that's going to be the one that's really going to help the most people in Freeport because the actual deferral program has some pretty significant income limits. And they're not significant, but it's, it's designed for people on fixed incomes and lower income. It's not designed for anybody that has any appreciable active income other than fixed retirements and things like that, so.
I, I realize that, but I just think that's so important that we get that out to them. We really.
Yeah, but there's no way, there's not a way.
I, I understand this being worked out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be on it. I mean, as soon as the state has the application and things like that ready, we'll make sure it's out there for people. But we really got to, I, I'm not convinced that there's not going to be rulemaking or maybe a legal challenge to that program because it was very broad. And I've heard a lot of municipalities grumbling about these like major details that weren't considered, like what happens if somebody gets their tax freeze and millenocket on their $1,500 tax bill and then takes, cashes out their retirement savings and moves to a House and Heads district and now we have to apply that $1,500 freeze against a $9,000, $10,000 tax bill in Freeport? Yep, they get it. And do we get the $1,500 or the $9,000 reimbursed from the state? Well, right now we get $1,500 reimbursed. So there's going to be a few things that they have to hammer out internally about the financing of this. But when that happens, and I know they're working on it now, when that happens, we'll make sure that people know about it and it's ready to go, so.
And the final thing, and I promise I'll shut up. I've had several residents come to me about the free dump days. It was done on a Monday, Tuesday. And the question they had, and I said, I will bring it up to see, could we possibly do a two-day thing maybe in the fall that would allow to come out so that we didn't have such an overload when you used to do it during the, you know, one week period? But they said it would be very nice if they could plan something, maybe a couple of days in the fall too. So maybe if you could check that out, that might be a cool way to help people out.
And just so there's some understanding on why that happened that way. It actually got too busy on the days that they were already open where, I want to say like three or four years ago, pre-COVID was the last time we did like a Monday through, or a Wednesday through a Saturday or something like that. And they would have just cars out the line and people were complaining, hey, why you, you can't keep up as, you know, during the regular time, now you're telling us to bring double loads in and things like that. So they did it Monday, Tuesday because they're closed on Monday and Tuesday. So it's fully dedicated to that. And then we also stayed open later for the people, I think they were open until seven, for people that work, like a lot of people do on Mondays and Tuesdays, so they could at least go in the evening. So you're not going to be able to go on Saturday, but you can go Monday night or Tuesday night. So there, I mean, they were trying to do something that worked, but I guess I've heard a little bit of gremlin about it too, that, yeah.
There weren't people that, like, I went after work and I was expecting it to be crazy busy and it was not like.
Nobody there when I went at six o'clock.
They told me that the morning was packed. If you went there first thing, then it was really busy. So I think maybe we just need to spread people out a little bit and then it would work.
Do it over a week or something.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, I'm sure they're open to.
I move that we adjourn.
Good question. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Chris does.